All right, thanks everyone for being here this morning for the budget meeting. So let's go ahead and get started. I'll bring anything you want to say.
No, this is our first one. John is going to run it today with some different speakers going over expenses and our production on revenues today. And then of course, you're going to leave back again in April to do a deeper dive into those. So you're good over to John to get started.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome to our first budget work session for fiscal year 2025. Our departments have submitted requests and those requests have been reviewed to establish the version of the budget we are now calling fiscal year 2025 first pass. So this is a look at our budget calendar for fiscal year 25. We met in November for our budget retreat where we discussed drivers for fiscal year 25 budget planning. Today, we will be having a high level discussion of revenues and present personnel and expenditure requests as well as capital requests. We are proposing funding in fiscal year 25. We will return next month on April 23rd with a fiscal year 24 year end projection, a two-year outlook with estimated fund balance, proposed changes to our fee schedule and how we can balance the budget. On May 9th, we will hear from our education partners regarding their fiscal year 25 local requests, as well as any requests from fire districts that wish to adjust their tax rate. We plan on delivering a recommended budget with a budget message on May 21st that will be at our regular meeting. At the following meeting on June 4th, we will hold a public hearing for the budget and move to adoption of the fiscal year 25 budget on June 18th. Any questions about the calendar? So our agenda is as follows. Budget analyst Jay Shi will update us on revenue indicators and I will follow with a discussion on fiscal year 2025 revenue. Following that, we will provide information about expenditure requests to include updates on some commissioner-driven priorities and a few new staff proposals. We will discuss proposed capital projects for fiscal year 2025 and as promised, hear from our finance office on capital funding strategies. We will then have some final discussion for the day and any considerations or information you have for staff as we craft the budget and wrap them. So I'm going to hand this over to Jay.
Thanks, John. Morning. So I'll just start by saying revenue projections are always a bit of a challenging exercise. So predicting the economic climate a year or two out as we have to for budget preparation is always going to include a degree of uncertainty amid constantly changing market conditions. Because of that, at the county, we do our best to constantly stay apprised of economic conditions to inform our budget development and long-term financial planning. So before we discuss FY 25 revenues, as John mentioned, we'd like to begin with a quick sampling of some indicators around the county's future revenue outlook to give some context to our development of our FY 25 first pass budget. So start, just starting off on a high level, the slide on the screen shows a US state and local government revenue outlook from Moody's, one of the big three credit rating agencies. I should note that as I did not develop the slide, my understanding is this chart is a essentially a compilation of all state revenues across all 50 states since 2000. So this won't be an exact apples-to-apples comparison with Buncombe County as states collect revenue sources that counties do not, such as income tax. This is also shown in calendar year and we typically present information in fiscal year. But this should help give sort of a broad outline of trends in revenue generation for, in the past, as well as what's forecasted for states and local governments. The dark blue line that you see shows percent change year over year. So it essentially shows the trend of revenue growth for, for all states across this time period. And that's what I want to draw your attention to. As you can see after, sort of that, I never really tried to use the laser before, but I'm not sure if it's working. But anyways, 2020, you can see the dip there in the early days of the pandemic and then the real sharp jump in 2021 and 2022 after the reopening of the economy and infusion of, you know, federal stimulus dollars and pandemic aid. We also see the, the sharp slowing of growth in 2023. And then Moody's is also projecting minimal low single-digit growth in 2024 and 2025. As John will describe in further detail, this outlook of minimal revenue growth is aligned with our general outlook for sales tax revenue going into FY 2025.
Jay, can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
So with this, this is showing, right, that as you said, the income tax, corporate, corporate tax, those are two things that don't actually impact us at the local government level because we don't rely on that funding.
Yeah.
I think to a degree we do in intergovernmental revenue because those revenues are passed through us from the state. So state income taxes are down, there is less money in the state budget to, to inform counties with local needs as well. So, so just, so you have to consider all state revenues as in total in order for us to continue, think about how intergovernmental revenue or even grants may flow down to the local government level.
So what kind of impact do you think that has on the intergovernmental, like?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk to, I'm gonna talk about that in some detail in just a little bit.
In addition to the intergovernmental, this also shows sales across the United States, Terry. So that helps to impact ours as well. That first blue line, the blue bar shows sales and as you can see, that is also down going into 2023 across the country. And that's direct impact into our sales tax revenue as well.
Yeah, no, I get the sales and how that impacts us. It was just that the, the income tax part, it just seems that the graph isn't necessarily like a true reflection of local government.
Yeah, yeah. And again, this is just to show just a broad outline, we'll get deeper into county-specific things. Just that, this is just to help set the stage a bit. And so speaking of sales tax, actually, so sales tax collections at Buncombe County are our best indicator for local economic activity. So looking at sales tax trends, we see similar trends to what we just saw in the previous chart for US states and local governments. I'll just quickly note actually that this slide has been slightly updated from what we sent last week. The chart in that version was comparing year-over-year information for only the first half of each year from FY 24 on back. So in other words, first six months in FY 23, 22, 21 on back. Whereas this chart shows annual percent, annual sales tax growth from FY 23 on back and then just the first six months for FY 24. And the, and just for some context, we only have six months of sales tax information at this time in the year since we received sales tax on a three-month lag. So it takes one month for us to collect the sales tax, one month to send it to the state and then one month for them to remit back our local portion. So we only have six months of data so far in, in FY 24. As I mentioned, the big takeaway on this chart is we're seeing similar trends to what we saw for US states overall in terms of sales tax revenues. After the dip in FY 20 and the pandemic, we see high growth in FY 21 and 22 and slowing of growth in FY 23 and 24 year-to-date. The big trend that is behind sort of the numbers you're seeing in FY 23 and 24 is we've actually seen only a monthly average of only around 0.7% growth over the last 11 months that we have data. So from December, so the latest month we have data is December 2023 on back to February 2023, we've essentially seen flat to minimal growth in, in sales tax. So for nearly a year and that's reflected in the numbers you see in FY 23 and FY 24.
So you said the most current is flat?
Yeah, essentially, yes.
Okay, because this is, this is actually showing year over year.
Right.
So the actual growth.
Yeah, percentage growth, yeah.
Percentage growth. So you can see in FY 24, we're essentially at 1%.
Okay.
So that, and that's what we've been seeing for the last year, basically, the second half of FY 23 and FY 24. We were seeing stronger growth in the first half of 23 and then it really dropped off in the second half. So compared, I just also note that compared to all North Carolina counties, which is the blue line, we're not alone in this trend, as you can see. And we're even seeing slower growth than in FY 23 and 24 than compared to all North Carolina counties. But very similar trend, as you can see. So while sales tax collections are our best indicator for local economic conditions, there are also some other indicators locally that, as well as some anecdotes from local news reports, that can help give further context as well. One indicator which is more directly linked to our tourism industry is occupancy taxes. So in FY 23, we saw a slight decline about 1%, a little over 1% in occupancy tax revenues as compared to FY 22. Year-to-date in FY 24, we're, we're seeing occupancy taxes are down a little over 3% as compared to FY 23. So, so for, for some further context, in FY 21 and 22, we saw growth of over 30% in, in both years. Again, the trend, so you're seeing that similar trend of strong growth in 21 and 22 and slowing and even in this case, declining growth in 23 and, and so far in 24. Reports on hotel occupancy also support the occupancy tax data and trends. So reporting from the TDA, we've seen lower monthly hotel occupancy as compared to the previous year over the last 11 months that we have data since January 2024. So from January 2024 on back to March 2023, so spring 2023, we've seen lower hotel occupancy in every month since then. So very similar to what we're seeing in sales tax. We're, we've also seen the reporting in the local news on, on these trends and their impacts to our tourism industry and the broader trend of slowing tax growth after the boom in 2021 and 2022 fueled by pandemic relief and aid. So these indicators have all helped inform our approach to budgeting for FY 25. And with that, I'll turn it over to John to talk more about the FY 2025 first pass budget revenues.
I have a question about this.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
So my question is, I mean, tourism is obviously one important aspect of our local economy, but there's other aspects of it too. So I would, I would like to have a more complete picture because there's, there's other things that impact this, right? There's other business growth. I mean, there's, there's the impact of the building that's going on. So can you speak to that, the other aspects that impact our local climate?
That's why I started with the sales tax because that really is our best indicator of like spending in the, in the economy. And, and then going, just to have some other indicators to sort of help further paint that picture. Like you say, occupancy taxes is not the sole driver of economic activity. So we just put that out as one of our other indicators that we, we have access to locally.
It's one of our leading indicators, right?
One of our leading indicators, sure.
Whereas sales tax is almost a lagging because it's three months behind, but occupancy tax is a leading indicator. And we will get into a little bit more, Terry, to permits revenues. We are seeing that flat as well, but we'll talk a little bit about permits and intergovernmental revenues in more detail. You have a question, Parker?
Previous graph, I mean, it showed that the decline in sales tax revenues predates the occupancy tax trend, right? So I guess, and it's statewide, so is it just inflation or do you have other thoughts on why? I guess locally and statewide, you know, why sales tax revenue started going down in FY 22?
I think we can probably see that inflation is an impactor. We know that over the last three years, inflation has grown 18 to 19% in just three years. 10 years prior, it was 16% over 10 years. So, so there may be a tightening of belts. Unfortunately, the Department of Revenue only provides its gross sales tax receipts. So there's really no data to dig into in terms of like what's being bought, how it's, how it's being bought. And, and so, and we, we were below the curve at, before the pandemic and the beginning of the pandemic and jumped up a little above the curve when we had this growth. But we've also seen a more precipitous drop than the rest of the state. Anything else? Any other questions for Jay? Okay, thank you, Jay.
Thanks.
We're now going to discuss revenue for the county for fiscal year 2025. I'd like to begin with a discussion of one-time funding. In 2020, the county received $9.6 million of coronavirus relief funds. Much of this was used to shore up our efforts to combat the pandemic in terms of testing, immunization, supplies and communication. In fiscal year 2022, the county received $50.7 million of American Rescue Plan Act Local Fiscal Recovery Funding. These dollars have gone to a variety of projects with roughly 60% of the funding going to outside entities. Also, we've seen the state pass through ARPA funding for almost $9 million more that included over $3 million of public health funding, as well as additional funding of adult protective services, school nursing, water and energy assistance and stream restoration. Continued funding for these items going forward if needed is now the county's responsibility. I think you might remember that we brought you an item on school nursing because we've, a couple of weeks ago, because we had a shortfall there from this one-time revenue the state is no longer providing. And so many entities, including the state, school systems and municipalities, received one-time revenues and funds were distributed to nonprofit partners as well. And some of these entities use these funds to shore up operations and are now facing a fiscal cliff as these revenue sources come to an end. For the county, these were largely used on one-time expenses, but the revenue outlook for next year is still not bright. In our first pass budget, you see property tax, as usual, the largest revenue source here at $264.9 million. This is 3.7% growth over last year. We are budgeting sales tax at $46.6 million in revenue, just 2% over our projection for this year. Intergovernmental revenues is budgeted at $47.6 million. Sales and services at $24.8 million. Transfers are budgeted at $5 million. Other taxes and licenses budgeted at $6.7 million. Permits and fees are budgeted at $5.7 million, while other revenues are budgeted at $11 million.
John makes up the other revenues.
So the other revenues include our investment earnings. And our investment earnings actually came in rather high last year. They really helped, helped us with revenue and we expect that to occur again this year. So that is, that is about half of that other revenue source. So we also have indirect cost recovery. We charge our other funds, our enterprise funds and other funds, the cost of administration and their sales of assets in there as well.
Sort of the flip side of the high interest rate environment, right?
Yes.
Like gas or construction, capital costs.
Yes.
But it's good for county investments because we invested all this conservative stuff.
We do, and, and Matt will speak to us more about investment earnings when we get to capital funding strategies. But, but it does not actually balance out the rest of our, our needs.
It is meaningful, right?
Yes, it is. So comparing our fiscal year 25 revenue to the fiscal year 24 amended budget, we see the largest increase in revenue is property tax, an increase due to natural growth of $9.4 million. Intergovernmental revenue decreases by $6.3 million as we see one-time public health revenues from the state elapsed. We see an impact for Medicaid expansion. We have some intergovernmental revenue based on sales tax that is also dropping. And so this is significant impact to, to intergovernmental revenue. Some of this revenue is directly tied to expenditures. So, so as in the, as in Medicaid eligibility, we receive 75% revenue on each dollar we spend. But some of this is, some of this is for services that we now will have to fund without as much count government revenue.
Can you break that down some more? What's going on with that, the 6.3 million? Because how much of that is based on the sales tax dropping versus the Medicaid, some of these different aspects you mentioned?
Sure. So one of the, one of the items here in our governmental revenue is what we call Medicaid Hold Harmless. So about 20 years ago, the state took one of our sales tax article revenues and they took it from the, from counties to cover the cost of Medicaid claims. And if, if the Medicaid claims exceeded that revenue, they would hold us harmless. But if the sales tax was greater than the claims, they would give, they would give us some of the sales tax revenue back. So we never actually saw any revenue from that until about three years ago. So about three years ago, we received a couple hundred thousand dollars. Two years ago, we received one and a half million dollars. And last year, we received four and a half million dollars. So we budgeted about $3 million this year. That revenue actually just came in two weeks ago and we received $212,000. So we received almost $3 million less revenue than, than we, than we, we budgeted. That has, that happened to every county across, across the state. So there, the cost of Medicaid claims vastly exceeded the tax this year as, as opposed to prior years. So there's probably some relation to Medicaid expansion there. And I know that the County Commissioners Association is working with DHHS and the Department of Revenue to understand the implications of that because we literally just received that information within the last two weeks. So that is almost $3 million of expected revenue this year that, that were short and that I can't budget next year until I know more. As I said before, there was several million dollars of one-time COVID Agreement Addenda public health funding that's come to an end. They allowed, they allowed carryforwards of, to use this funding for multiple years and we have done quite a few things with that money. We've purchased the mobile unit for HHS. We installed a generator up at the Public Safety Training Center for, to have a backup emergency operations center. We've, as well as used those for COVID immunization efforts and also some funding of the mobile team. So those are, those are revenues that are also going away. And then there is some social services revenue. The, the state had an audit finding last year from the federal government in that they were drawing down Medicaid revenue improperly and, and that the state was drawing down 75% across the board when they should only be drawing down 75% for eligibility and 50% for the rest. So there was a finding by the federal government on the state. The state held us harmless for that this year, so they didn't pass along the costs to counties this year. But in the future, they, there's an adjustment to that revenue source that we're not drawing down as much revenue as we've seen. So that is a, that's a, about as high, high level or as I can talk about intergovernmental revenue today, I could probably sit down and chat about it for a long time.
That's, that was helpful, thank you. I appreciate it.
John, refresh my memory too. Under intergovernmental, I know you've mentioned several things that fall under HHS. But my memory serving on that HHS board is a lot of HHS is funded through intergovernmental. Am I correct on that?
Yes, yes. The majority of this, these dollars to the tune of about 40 of that 47 is HHS revenue, yes. This also includes any agreements we have with local governments such as that, that we have any cost sharing agreements with around public safety. And so, so that, there's also some local government revenue in there as well.
Thank you.
Before we leave this, so this has the local option, sales tax decline in 2.3?
Yes, yeah, I was just about to get there. And so the sa, the sales tax decreases $2.3 million, 4.7 million, 4.7% lower than last year's budget. So I'm going to talk about sales tax in a couple of slides in depth. But we budgeted, we budgeted sales tax this year at about, I believe, expecting about 8% growth over last year, which was still, given the prior year is still conservative. However, we're not hitting the budget this year. So, so our, this budget is based on, above the projection that we see this year.
So it's not projected decline in this year, but it's declined relative to last year's estimates?
Yes. So our transfers have decreased by $4.4 million. We're seeing approximately $340,000 in additional permits and fees revenue. So we are seeing a flattening of the curve in our building permits here. And so while this has gone up by, by actually a couple million dollars over the last couple of years, there is a flattening of the curve we're seeing here.
And then can, with the interfund transfers and the other taxes and licenses, can you just speak some more to that variance, please?
Yes, so the interfund transfer revenue you see in this, in the first pass budget is the $5 million we transfer from the AB Tech Fund to, to help fund their operations. We, in '24, we budgeted $2 million from our internal medical insurance fund to balance the budget. We're keeping an eye on that to see whether or not we need to use that this year. It's not, if we do that, I can't do that again in another year. So the internals, the internal medical insurance fund is the contributions we make, we make from the general fund to make all our self, all, pay all our self-insurance, our claims and such. So at last year, I budgeted a one-time $2 million transfer from that fund because it looked like we were healthy to balance the budget. If, if I need to use that $2 million this year and will have no more next month when I come to you with a revenue and expenditure year-end projection, that's not something I can do again. And then we also had some, we also had some transfers from the capital fund. Our other tax- Our other taxes and licenses, you see a large reduction there. Most of that is our state excise tax. So the Register of Deeds collects excise tax. It's varied, it, that is, that has also been down. It's about seven and a half million dollars this year bumped up. I brought you budget amendments year before last bumping us up to almost ten million dollars on that revenue. We must pay forty-nine cents on the dollar back to the state for all of that revenue. So, so rather than budget the forty-nine cents on the expenditure side, we just reduce the revenue on the revenue budget and we're going to pay the state's share out of the revenue budget rather than budget expenditure. So what you see, the reduction in other ta- taxes, licenses comes with expenditure dollars as well, so that's, most of that is a wash. And the increase in five point nine million dollars in other revenues is largely due to investment earnings. So otherwise, revenue is basically flat with around two hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars over our current year amended budget. And this change is less than one tenth of one percent. So here you see the property value over the last two years with the most recent valuation estimate from our property assessment team. This is three point six percent growth in back-to-back years. Property tax revenue is based on the tax rate per one hundred dollars of total property value and multiplied by the collection rate. By statute, we cannot budget a collection rate that exceeds the actual rate of the year prior. And we plan to budget the same collection rate as this year, ninety-nine point seven five percent, which is what, what our tax collection office has collected last year and, and also budgeted this year and on target to meet that. That's actually a very high collection rate amongst counties. So this is a five-year look back at our ad valorem revenues. As we've just discussed before, property tax is our largest revenue stream and the one we have the most control over. Like our value, our revenue can be expected to increase about three point five percent in a non-revaluation year. In fiscal year twenty-one, we saw an increase in revenue due to the purchase of Mission Hospital and its assets, which were now taxable. In fiscal year twenty-two, we saw the results of our four-year revaluation and chose to increase the tax rate by two cents over the revenue neutral rate. Last year, we added a penny to the tax rate for education and saw an increase of about one percent in revenue. The revenue budget presented today for fiscal year twenty-five is based on an assumption that the tax rate remains the same this year. So sales tax revenue, we've talked about how this lags by three months and Jay has said that this is the most difficult revenue stream to forecast and project. And from Jay's slides, you saw that sales tax revenue is down across the state. So the budget for fiscal year twenty-five is set at a modest two percent increase over our projection for this year. This increases more in line with pre-pandemic year-over-year changes. And Article forty-six taxes present for your reference, that tax funds operating in capital projects for AB Tech. This is a five-year look back at our sales tax revenue. We saw a reduction in fiscal year twenty as the pandemic slowed down spending, but then saw large returns in successive years in fiscal year twenty-one and twenty-two. This trend slowed in fiscal year twenty-three and we finished the year almost three million dollars under the revenue budget. Our projection for this year looks to net about three point six million dollars short of budget this year. So do you have any thoughts about revenue?
Okay, just to make sure I heard correctly, so the, the, in this current year, you're expecting to come in about three point six million under what you had projected for sales tax?
Under what we budgeted, yes.
Under what we budgeted.
Yeah, that's, so three point six under is our projection.
Is the projection.
And once we have the March, the March close, we will put together what we believe to be our firmest year-end projection and bring that to you next month.
Okay.
And how much more did we bring in through the government investments this year?
So government investments at this point in the year, I would defer to finance. It's hard to say because we true those up at year end. We budgeted.
Nine fifty, nine hundred and fifty thousand. We've brought in around four million dollars so far.
We budgeted a little or a million, whatever formula you took.
That's correct.
It's almost a one-to-one of the sales tax, right?
Yes, on the, on the sales tax.
Other factors?
Yes, with the intergovernmental revenue and some of, and some of the other, there are shortfalls in some of the other revenues. We're seeing some of the, Commissioner Sloan's favorite, the rental car revenue is, is down this year. So we are, so there, and we'll, we'll do a deep dive with our final year projections next month. But yes, while the, while you could say there's sort of a wash between the sales tax and the investment earnings, honestly, the investment earnings is, is, doesn't cover the whole we're seeing in terms of where we expected revenue this year.
And that's for FY twenty-four, so do you have a sense of kind of, we've taken that into consideration where we are in FY twenty-four or that's, you're going to wait until you get some more data in?
I'll bring that to you next month.
Okay.
So you've, you've heard from Matt that on a little less than a million dollar budget, we're, we're at four million dollars so far for the year.
We're being aggressive. So we're in a very rare opportunity where we have really high interest rates in these short-term markets, right? So we've allocated most of our portfolio in those short-term markets to really capitalize on those high interest rates and we're going to try to ride that train as long as we can.
So everything staff, you think staff should be cognizant of going forward?
And so with this FY twenty-five sales tax, you feel that you're being conservative with the projection for this coming year?
Yes, we're saying two percent above the projection for this year. So while that budget will be smaller in twenty-five than twenty-four, we feel that's sort of in line with what we saw during the pandemic where we saw pre-pandemic where generally you would only see between a ha- half percent to three percent growth in any given year, going back almost ten, a decade prior to the pandemic. We rarely saw anything approaching five percent growth in a year, which is why the two big years we saw in twenty-one and twenty-two were really, really are now beginning to look like anomalies.
I don't know if it's not a question, it's more like an observation. I mean, I think, I think this all, I think the, all the thinking going into this makes, you know, resonates. It seems like we're in a moment where like doing these forecasts is, you know, particularly challenging, right? There's just been, I mean, the last few years have been very weird, as we all know. I mean, and just in terms of the circumstances that have affected the economy. And, and a lot of the forecasts for what's going to happen have just been really hard to have dialed in, right? Like, I think it was like, like last year, there was this, I can't remember which article it was, but basically like there was this story talking about how like a hundred percent of the economists were predicting a recession, like a hundred percent. The chances of avoiding recession were zero, right? And here we are humming along, right? So it's just, it's hard to see how this pans out. I mean, maybe that interest rates, interest rates are probably going to go down. I mean, that's what's holding up all this building stuff. So if that goes down, I mean, building could, there's probably like a huge amount of pent-up demand.
Absolutely.
So it's just, it's hard to, it's hard to know, but it does, it seems like we should be taking a cautious approach on all this until hopefully we do, you know, continue to see this like decline of inflation and, and things really look good for the next year, two, three. But we just don't know how that's going to play out if interest rates stay really high and people just can't get stuff financed, right? Because it's expensive to borrow money right now.
Over the last two years, I've learned more about economics than I ever thought I would want to know. But I, I think what economists are saying is that the traditional levers of how you might approach the economy and raising interest rates to slow inflation are not working like they used to and that we're really in some uncharted territory with the way the economy is behaving right now. And so that it's really, yes, to, on your point, it is very hard to predict right now, but it's a cautious, I believe a cautious approach is important. We're seeing that, that spending from sales tax is going down. And with inflation, there may be a tightening of belts for the average person. We hear how much groceries cost. We, I mean, inflation is beginning to hit people in their pocketbook on a daily basis. So there may be some contraction of, of spending as we go forward.
And John, as part of this now, it's not like the old days when we control our destiny economic wise, you know, so much of it depends on what's going on in the world. And we don't always, we can't project that, you know, ways. And I think that's something that we're going to have to learn to live with in America. It's a new day now, economically wise. And a lot of the old ways we were doing, the triggers that we were looking at are no longer, they don't any longer apply.
All right, any other questions about the revenues, revenue outlook? All right, well, thanks. All right. Get forward.
All right. Jay's going to excuse himself at the table.
Thank you, thank you.
So I'm going to move our, our discussion to requested expenditures. So there are currently forty-five position requests in the first past budget. In your folder, you have a list of the entire list of requested positions that we've, that we started with this year. So forty-two of these forty-five positions are in the general but, fund, eight of which are in budgeted, and I'll talk about that in a minute. Three in the solid waste enterprise fund at a total cost of three point one million dollars. The position requests currently in the fiscal year first, twenty-five first past budget include six positions in Division of Social Services Income Maintenance to support the call center and then Energy Assistance, four positions in social work to support foster care visitation, and administrative position to support the Fire Marshal's Office. We're moving four community paramedic positions currently funded through local fiscal recovery funds to the general fund as that grant expires in December. We're adding eight paramedic positions in May or June, which we will not budget for this year in advance of the opening of an EMS base in early fiscal year twenty-six.
So it's not reflected in this chart?
It's in the thirteen number. So eight of the thirteen is there, so we will ask you four positions. We just will not attach budget to them this year.
That's those eight unbudgeted.
Yes. So, so we expect to be a opening of EMS space in early twenty-six, so we don't want to have a base open with no one to staff it. So that, that is the desire there for eight positions that we would post in later towards the end of the year. A program supervisor and two case managers for the Family Justice Center. An additional mechanic in fleet services. General Services has requested additional maintenance technicians specifically for the detention center. Human Resources has requested a human resources coordinator. A system analyst focused on general government software and IT systems is requested for information technology. There are three librarians as we continue to staff libraries per the library staffing plan that was created several years ago. Permits and inspections has requested administrative coordinator. The planning department has requested a zoning code compliance officer and an erosion control technician. There's an environmental health specialist for food and lodging in public health. A parks landscape supervisor for recreation services. Two co-responder detectives and a grants administrator specifically for grants compliance in the sheriff's department. An additional business property appraiser and tax assessment. These requests total two point eight million dollars in the first past budget. Are there any questions about these?
Question I've got, in this, do we have any people who are hired through the, all the opera money that's now becoming part of the permanent staff?
So going back to the emergency services, yes, we've four community paramedics we're going to bring in, in, they're budgeted for half a year because the ARPA funds expire in December. So we can't fund salaries past December of twenty twenty-four in ARPA. So those are the positions that we're looking at bringing, bringing on.
They are the only ones.
Yes, the, the other positions in ARPA are based, are admin for, for the grant itself. So those are the only positions that we're looking to bring over from that grant.
Any other positions in?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
And just a quick question around, while we're on personnel, the, our call center, our nine-one-one call center, how are we doing with that? Because I know that had been a challenge for us and can you give us an update?
So we, for nine-one-one, we haven't, we've done a variety of things to staff them up, to help staff them up. So they've collaborated with other local agencies, including our fire districts, and they've also worked with a staffing company, a national staffing company that is now in the area, has, in the area and has provided temporary staff to, to help them get up to speed. And one of the other things they're looking at, they are going to partner with Amazon to use their machine learning to filter out calls that are non-emergency calls. That's a large volume, volume of calls and we're talking about thousands of calls a, a month so that they can focus on more emergency calls. So they have been, they have been staffing up. I believe they added, I think we've about twenty-four position, twenty-four, filled twenty-four positions over, over the last seven, eight months. And haven't, and while there have been a couple of folks who decide nine-one-one, it wasn't for them, they have retained all their long-term staff over that period of time.
Oh, good, because that was part of the issue before was turnover. Okay.
There was so much volume that they were getting burned out.
Yeah, okay.
All the, all the strategies that John talked about around fire departments and other first responders helping us out, as well as the staffing agency, as he calls it, the traveling nine-one-one staff, those have really helped to take some of that load off. But one of our biggest improvements will be helping that machine learning because as John mentioned, we have thousands of calls of people calling to ask, where's the courthouse or my waters that are not true emergencies? And if we can offload that from the nine-one-one center into a call center separate, we can help reduce some of that volume as well. But I thought you were asking because you saw some positions on the list that was not approved in nine-one-one and those, we do have some reclassifications in nine-one-one that would help with that staffing crisis that they're looking for, so.
But right now, we didn't, until we're fully staffed, it didn't make sense to add additional vacancies to, to that. So we'll assess as the year goes on and we are continuing the staffing contract into fiscal year twenty-five to, and so once they, and the training time for nine-one-one is, takes so long that you can only bring so many. and the training time for nine-one-one is, it takes so long that you can only bring so many people on at a given time.
How many vacancies do we have in that department?
Twenty, we had about twenty.
Twenty vacancies?
Yeah, when we, when we went into the crisis, we were at about fifty-seven percent vacancy rate, and we're at about twenty percent now. So all the strategies that have been deployed have helped us to reduce that vacancy rate.
Okay, thank you.
So if there's no more questions here. A solid waste has requested three positions, an environmental enforcement specialist supervisor, a heavy equipment operator, and a safety inspector for the transfer station. These positions cost three hundred one thousand dollars. Moving on. For the personnel ordinance, each year, the commissioners may grant a salary increase based on a cost of living adjustment, a COLA calculation to all employees occupying a regular position and grant from a position for which the funding source allows. During the budget planning process of each year, staff will present a COLA calculation to the board. This calculation is the two-year average annual change in the consumer price index for urban wage earners and clerical workers, or the CPIW for short, published by the U.S. Bureau of Labor Assistants and measured as of the December data release next preceding the date. So the board will grant a COLA adjustment through the budget ordinance. If the board elects to provide an annual COLA, that COLA will be effective July first. So that calculation based on the two-year average change yields a four point eight-nine percent COLA increase.
And is that, that formula you have up here, so it's this two-year, this two-year analysis, right?
Yes, so that, that three hundred number was the index as of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. And the two seventy-three point nine number was the December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one number.
Okay.
And so.
And with inflation coming down significantly in the last, you know, last year, is it correct that like the, the fact that we do this two-year analysis basically means like this COLA was flattened somewhat last year, but it's elevated somewhat this year relative to kind of current inflation because we do that? It's not a twelve months, it's a twenty-four months kind of analysis?
Yes, if we did a one year, this is, this is higher than just one year. But for two years prior, we were under.
So the really high rates over the last, you know, year to two are still baked into what we're looking at for this coming budget?
To some degree, yes. We did see, start to see inflation flattening in late fall. So there, so some of that is here. So that number was up to three hun, at, at its height was about three oh four, three oh five. So in discussing the budget impact of personnel drivers for the general fund, the additional position requests we discussed a couple of slides ago represent two point eight million dollars. The state has also increased the required retirement match by the county for employees' participation in the state retirement system. And this increase equates to two point two million dollars. Health insurance costs increased due to the number of enrollees, eight hundred thousand dollars. Additionally, previously unbudgeted costs related to payroll taxes and 401K, as well as an increase in workers' compensation costs, add two point one million dollars. And applying the cost of living adjustment to existing positions is approximately seven and a half million dollars. As it stands in this first pass budget, these personnel cost increases are estimated at fifteen and a half million dollars.
John, a question on the state retirement increase.
Yes.
The North Carolina Association County Commissioners, are they looking, because that's gonna impact counties across the state.
Yes, it does.
Are they looking at addressing that at the state level or attempting to?
I, I'm not certain if that's one of the things that they're working on right now. We see the state pass along costs to us each year. It has varied from a one and a half million to two million dollars annually. So there has, as long as I have been in, in the budget office, I have seen an annual pass, pass along of additional retirement costs.
Maybe it's not on the list there.
So there's a trend?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
This we could call a trend.
Yes.
So do we have any questions or any discussion related to personnel? So we are in the second year of our vehicle evaluation team that we convene to assess vehicle requests made by departments and make recommendations based on policy and need. And this team has requested twenty replacement SUVs for the sheriff's office, two hybrid SUVs for emergency medical services, one which is new and one in replacement, a replacement SUV for emergency management, one new hybrid pickup truck for the public safety training center, a replacement electric cargo van for recreation services, and a new box truck for the landscape staff for recreation services. We're also budgeting for four ambulances and three ambulance chassis. These requests total three point four million dollars and will be offset by short-term debt financing.
Those four ambulances, is that to help get us ready for the FY twenty-six face opening?
That is to replace existing vehicles, so we're not adding to the fleet at this time.
Okay, thank you.
We did, in twenty seventeen, we, there was a decision made to replace the entire fleet at once. And, and so we have been working through that decision.
Oh, thanks.
We've been trying to stagger them so that that wouldn't happen again, where you have to try to replace all ambulances at over four hundred thousand a piece?
Right.
All at once, so.
That seems like a much better plan.
We've been staggering.
They were also much cheaper than that, too.
Yeah.
That's point taken.
Can you talk a little bit about the ambulance chassis and why we're doing chassis versus full ambulance?
Yes, and so we still see the significant supply chain, supply chain lags for ambulances. Taylor Jones, our, our emergency services director, will probably tell you it's twenty-four to thirty months after an order for delivery of, of a fully, of a full ambulance. So what we are looking at is ordering chassis and then taking our box off the top of older ambulances and putting on new chassis. So that is one of our strategies to alleviate this long, this long-term delay. So these are the vehicles that will be purchased. So new this year, we are moving to lease general government vehicles.
Sorry, we're purchasing them, but you said we're gonna finance them?
We are going to finance them, so, so there, this will be offset with debt financing. So new this year, we are moving to lease general government vehicles as opposed to purchase. I'm gonna let Matt Evans in a minute talk about the leasing model, but I just want to walk you through what it is that we're going to lease. And so there, we have thirteen SUVs requested for social services. Four are related to visitation staff. One is a replacement, and eight are for a motor pool for social workers. We have over probably a hundred social workers who travel in the field using their own vehicles. So we're trying to establish a motor pool for use of those.
Say that again, Ronnie?
Police report.
Getting there, getting there.
Getting there.
In environmental health, four sedans are for motor pool for food and lodging, and two trucks are for onsite wastewater staff. There's a replacement truck for general services and another related to their position request, the maintenance technician. Two new trucks are related to the position request for planning. A new truck for agriculture and land resources, and two replacement trucks for permits and inspections. There's no questions, if there are questions about the actual vehicles, I'll field those.
Just real fast, for DSS, the motor pool is eight vehicles? Those numbers add up to more than ten, some, is the motor pool nine new or?
So there are eight, eight for a motor pool.
Okay.
And there is one replacement.
Okay.
And then there are four for visitation staff.
I see.
So that should add up to thirteen.
Okay.
However.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
However, the vehicle evaluation team saw fit to decide on the, because they also decide on the particular model that is best for, for the use.
Right. And those eight vehicles are the first of the new motor pool?
Yes.
You don't have, okay.
Right, where we don't have every single employee driving their vehicles.
Right.
And we did an analysis, and we believe we can offset the cost we pay for mileage, the purchase of these vehicles. So that's why that's the number that we chose as well.
That was exactly what I was gonna ask, thank you, Avril.
There is all, there is also some revenue.
We're leasing these, right?
Yes.
Yes, these are leases.
We get to benefit a little bit because we're leasing them over years. I think the, it's like three hundred thousand we're paying in those ten cars?
For a.
For the mileage?
Um, we, yeah, we're about three hundred twenty-five, three hundred fifty thousand dollars in mileage and social work reimbursement right now.
Around three hundred and fifty thousand annually.
That we pay employees to drive their vehicle.
So Avril, you're saying the savings from this helps us purchase some other vehicles?
Right.
Okay, got it.
That's great.
So I'm gonna let Matt, if we don't have questions about the actual vehicles, I'm gonna let Matt talk us a little bit about the lease and how we came to that conclusion.
So just high-level discussion on a leasing program and sort of the benefits from that. You see on the slide a point eight million dollar savings, but Avril just hit it. With the leasing program, we see savings as we hit around year four or five. And what happens is it also helps us with our availability of vehicles. You heard John talk about there's some supply chain issues. We've, we've been in talks with a supplier that will allow us to be able to create our pools, our motor pool, and get us the vehicles that we need, and we can realize savings over because we start to build equity in later years. And then we're just bringing on new vehicles as we go, so that's it in a nutshell.
How, how do you gain equity through the leasing program?
Well, for one, we're not purchasing vehicles upfront, and they're not, you know, they're not dying on our, in our parking lots over time, right? So we're able to kind of cycle through, and it's kind of a more, I'll have to read the actual.
Is Melissa on? Melissa was gonna be online, and she could probably answer this better?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, I can, I can jump in. Sure. So Chairman Newman, answer your question, how we build equity in the program is, um, the, the vendor that would be our partner through this is, um, mark, open to all of the markets for the vehicles. So they partner with us and look for opportunities for someone wanting to pay more for the vehicle than what we owe remaining on the lease. So in about year four is typically when you see where, what we have, what we owe remaining on a vehicle and opportunities to, to rotate that out and basically sell that to someone and paying more. So let's say if we owe ten thousand remaining and someone's willing to pay twelve thousand, um, we would take that two thousand and roll that back in to where it's somewhat, if you will, like a down payment on the replacement. So the monthly lease on that replaced vehicle is less. So as we continue to rotate that fleet out, we're investing that equity back in. So in about year four or five, you start to slowly see that investment of that equity being and added to, to where you can start adding vehicles. So the number and the volume of vehicles you have under lease grows, and the cost of that lease, depending on the number of vehicles that you have coming on, could start to kind of plateau. Or if the number of the vehicles doesn't continue to grow, you could start seeing the cost of your overall lease program decline. But it, it's really more of a long-term partnership. But that, that the vendor here is truly a partner in finding those opportunities for us.
So Melissa, do they have then some data to show that, that they can actually find people willing to pay more than we owe to help with those projections?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
One of the other benefits we also see is that the purchasing power that a leasing company such as Enterprise has is much greater than the county's purchasing power, so that they can actually go get the vehicles. Whereas you have seen me bring carry forwards year over year the last several years because we, the vehicles have just not been available to us or have, we've seen delays in them arriving.
You know, it's good to see us going, reaching this point, but in banking, we were doing that twenty years ago. You know, we went to leasing a long time ago.
Yeah, we do have to build the foundation as well, the software that can schedule, and so all those pieces have to be in place before we can get to this point.
Thank you for getting us there.
We've identified about sixty vehicles that, sixty general government vehicles that could be leased. So you see a handful of those sixty here amongst the replacement vehicles. So as those vehicles reach the end of their useful life, we'll replace those with leased vehicles. This will also, and then there's also minimal maintenance having to be done in terms of that, the, at the garage.
Of course, it was easy for us, it was all automobiles, you know, we didn't have the trucks and all that.
Thanks, Melissa.
Are there any other questions about vehicles? Moving now to education. The first pass budget includes an increase to AB Tech for the unrestricted revenue growth rate, which results in an increase of our contribution of two hundred eighty-six thousand dollars. As a new funding formula has not yet been proposed for funding K-12 local current expense, this budget has a placeholder flat to FY twenty-four's contribution. This is the last five years of local current expense to our two K-12 school systems. Schools saw a six percent decrease in enrollment in fiscal year twenty twenty-one and some slight decline since, while the local funding has increased thirty-seven percent over the last four years.
Over the last four years?
Yes, this period from twenty-one to twenty-four.
And the school population continues to decline.
Yeah, that's, yes, that's a green line there.
Sorry, the percentage appropriation is a percentage of, of what now?
That's the percent growth year over year from the prior, so.
Year over year, gotcha.
Yes, so in twenty-four, we, that's, that was almost seventy percent more than we'd funded in twenty-three.
I see. That six percent decline in FY twenty twenty-one, was that, um, what, was that COVID-related?
Likely, that was the post-pandemic. So that was, would have been the first year that they were, that, that they took account post-pandemic. They, I believe it was twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, which was the highest year of our local student population. So there has been a decrease over ten years, and was just extremely sharp in this one year period. Additionally, the county supports capital projects and debt service for the school systems through sales tax and lottery funding per state legislation. Buncombe County is statutorily mandated to provide half of Article thirty-nine sales tax revenues for school capital needs. This revenue is unrestricted for other counties. So we will bring back additional context for education funding at our next work session. But I'm happy to field any questions on education might have at this point.
So in, in other counties, that's, it's unrestricted, and not just for education, it's just completely unrestricted. So counties can use that funding however.
It would be part of your sales tax revenue. So in twenty-three and twenty, twenty-four, that's about nineteen million dollars that other, for other, if we were not legislate this way, would be additional nineteen million dollars that would have been in the general fund for revenue.
And, and so it's, here it's dedicated to just, um, school capital, K-12 school capital. But is it, and it's legislate, legislate mandated to? But is it, um, and it's legislatively mandated to be invested that way? And I'm just, I, I don't know how much research we've done on this, so if I don't know is a perfectly acceptable answer, but, you know, so the counties have this responsibility for taking care of school capital needs, of course, across the state. So, um, is it, is it, um, correct that other counties are not mandated to use the funds that way, but would commonly use these funds for school capital needs? Because they do have the same responsibilities that.
That we use the entire general fund pot.
Potentially, yes. I, I provided a comparison, I believe, to you, um, of several school systems several months ago. And, uh, s- some of the local current expense dollars that you see from other systems includes capital needs.
Do, and do we know, I guess kind of a related question is, do we know in terms of like, I mean, I'm sure folks have all heard this story about how like back in the eighties or nineties, you know, Buncombe County was not taking good care of the schools. This led Senator Nesbit to support this idea of dedicating these funds for school capital.
Through a local bill, I think?
Passed a local bill, basically mandating these funds be invested so that we could fix up the schools and take care of the schools. And we've made all this, you know, uh, progress since then. In terms of where we are today, do we have benchmarks kind of looking at what is, um, typical for the amount of funding flowing into capital needs for other counties of similar size for their schools relative to how much Buncombe is today investing into capital needs for the K to twelve?
That's not easy to look at, um, because, like we said, some schools, it's lumped into their local current expense. So Guilford County provides a local current expense to their school system. That includes capital funding for the school then to see, to spend the capital funding and the operating as they see fit year over year. So, and with, as, as you know, with local current expense, we can't mandate how the schools spend. So, so in Guilford's example, that local current expense may leave them and they may say, well, we expect you'll spend this much on capital funding, but they then, may then spend a different amount. So there's no real easy way to get at those numbers.
I think over the past few election cycles too, I know Wake County in particular has done some significant bond referendums to take care of education funding, and I think we'll probably, that probably makes it really hard to.
Yeah, Guilford County was one of those counties that did a school, school capital bonds to the tune of about seventy million dollars? A couple of years ago, seventy million dollars in school capital bonds.
So is there, is there, I, I get that it's kind of maybe hard to tease this out. Is there any way to do that though? I mean, in terms of looking at, I mean, I'm just, uh, it's a, obviously it's like a big, it's a big area of investment. It's a big responsibility to just, I mean, for all these years, it's not really been something we have to think about, right? Because it's just like, this is what the law says, you just do it, right? And the, and, you know, of course, these revenues, they're more flat now, right, too, because of sales tax being projected to be flat. But it's grown, and I mean, it's grown enormously, you know, over the last, uh, ten years. So there's, there's not any kind of like statewide analysis around, here's what, you know, here's what counties are typically appropriating for capital investments in schools.
We can try to at least call some of those larger counties and see if they can help us. But I don't think there's a DPI site, and I'm looking at, okay, there's no DPI site that we can quickly go and get that. So it would be calling a couple of large systems to see if they can tell us what percent of their current expense is dedicated to capital.
In terms of their, the, in terms of like the public education investment they make, what percentage is capital versus operating?
Yes.
I would, I would love to have more high level information on that. So, thank you, if there's any way to look at that.
And so on this slide, you've got the Article thirty-nine, and did you say some other ones are included in the slide?
Um, Articles forty and forty-two.
Okay, so just.
There's a portion of forty and forty-two which are mandated across the state.
So every, every county has to do their forty and forty-two, but only Buncombe County got that additional.
Okay, so this includes all of it? And it's showing the debt service that we have out of the School Capital Commission?
Correct.
And then the other part of it is all of that?
Yes.
Okay. And you, I thought you mentioned something about lottery as well?
No.
The, this, some of the sales taxes put is, helps some, helps fund cash flow with the, in lottery projects.
Say that again, John?
It's part of, it's part of the capital funding formula. So if I'm a school system and I need to build some infrastructure, lottery funding would be a portion of that formula for me to tap into to pay for that.
But that, okay, that's, we're not showing that here.
Correct. This is just Buncombe County. So if you would add this slide to the previous slide, that's the total investment coming from Buncombe County to schools.
The other, the other kind of data piece, I just, um, never quite feel like I'm sure we're comparing apples to apples on, you know, when we look at, um, like our per people investments in schools, you know, we just saw some slides on that, right? Did, um, does that data include the dedicated sales tax revenue that goes into the capital investments in schools? Like you were saying, like when we compare to some of our peer counties and we talk about their per people investment.
It includes.
That includes capital and operating costs.
It does.
Right? But in our case, we have this big, big capital investment, like on top of what we allocate, because it's just legislatively going there. And so is that like on top of?
This is on top of what I've shared with you, yes.
Yes.
The per pupil expenditure that we're doing is our local current expense, the operating. It's, this is a little harder to tease out between the two school systems. Whereas in local current expense, it's based on their average daily membership. So, so that, that, you can easily tease out how much is going to each school system. With, with school capital, the projects are not aligned as easily. So this would just, this would be a lump on top of the, the entirety of the enrollment. But we can't really say how much of this is going to Asheville City Schools.
But, but to Brown, I think to Brownie's question is when we compare, and some I'm looking at, use my educational expert. When we compare the per people rate, we're looking at the current expense, the slide before. We don't usually add in capital. But other counties have capital embedded in their local current expense, so it is apples and oranges when we compare to other counties.
What we've shared with you is general fund contributions from counties to local, to their local current expense. Like I said, some of those counties, that local current expense in their general fund is capital funding.
But only in some, because maybe, maybe Wake County did a bond, and so it wouldn't be embedded in those numbers, or?
It, it could. What, what we're seeing is that no county really has the optimal approach to s- school funding.
Remember that a bond is just a funding mechanism. It's not a funding source, right? So they're still having to pay for those bonds, pay those bonds down with.
Sure.
Assuming here, most likely with their general fund at Guilford. So.
Well, and I'm thinking of like the, um, some of the charts we were, when we were going through budget last year, where we were showing like, or we were looking at, like, how does, how does Buncombe County, um, compare to some of the other large urban counties in terms of our per people investments? You know, we showed like we were very close, you know, we were very close to a lot of the other big urban counties, probably a little bit more. Um, but like very, you know, maybe, maybe Durham was a little bit higher. Orange County maybe a little bit, a little bit higher than the others. We're close. And I'm just wondering, like, when we look at those figures, if, if the figures from the other counties does include their investment in capital, whereas ours doesn't, and we have this major additional investment in capital, whereas, so there's other school systems, when they look at their per people investment, that's gotta pay not only for operations, but taking care of the buildings too. So I'm just trying to, what, going through this cycle, if there's a way we could kind of have sort of these true apples to apples, like analysis of like our levels of investment in K through twelve and the, you know, other counties that are similar to us around the state, that'd be helpful information.
Is there a number of peer counties you'd like us to look at?
Well, you know, think about, you know, Guilford, Forsyth, Orange, Wake, you know, the other, you know, six to eight larger counties. It'd have to be every one of them, but just, um.
New Hanover.
New Hanover's always the closest, right?
Yeah.
Exact same size, so.
And, and like I say, what is provided by the county in local current expense and with an earmark for capital may not be what the school system actually then spends it on.
We're coming from the county side, so Brownie, we hear you. We'll, we'll try to call around.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have something.
There's no repository for that.
Next month.
Thank you. Great.
Anything else on education?
Let me say one thing, I think it won't be further complicate that though. Sorry, I'm gonna throw the wrench. The number of positions that are funded through local dollars across our two school systems that may not be the case in these other counties that we may want to benchmark against, is that gonna still give us apples to oranges?
Now, we did, a couple of years ago, we did move through that exercise in attempting to find how many, how many were locally funded.
So we could still factor that in?
And it was, it was extremely difficult to make comparisons. Uh, we did find that, that we had probably more locally funded positions than many of the school systems.
Agreed, but if we're looking from what the county investment is, how the schools spend it is different, right? If they're spending on salaries or capital or not, but how the county send the money, so that's what we're trying to get. What is included in that pot of money that's coming from other schools, if it's capital or operations? And then once we get that, then we can decide if we add these numbers to operations as well to get our true investments.
Thank you.
I think it's going from the county's appropriation versus how the schools spend it.
Okay, thank you.
So, we look at the budget by function in comparison with the amended fiscal year twenty-four budget. You see a five point four percent increase. Our largest increase is in public safety, followed by human services. Debt payments will increase by almost two million dollars. Other financing sources include the transfers to other funds to include transportation, affordable housing, conservation easements, reparations, economic development incentives, reappraisal funding, and grant matches. Are there any questions about expenditure requests in this budget?
So the economic and physical development, the reduction there, can you speak to that one?
So, uh, one of the things that we're, we're doing, we've shifted some costs around within the budget. We have a, we have an area of what we call non-discretionary insurance and bonds, where we have traditionally costed out an equal share per employee across the organization. So for twenty-five, we are shifting those costs to the areas where we see the most insurance claims. So that, that is what you see, that's not, I'm not gonna say that's the entire bump up in public safety, but public safety is about eighty percent of those costs. So we're shifting those, those costs, which is a couple million dollars in total around. So those are shifting from public safety, so some of the, the reduction you see in economic and physical development is likely related to that, but we will, I will bring you more details on, on the, these expenditures by function next month.
Thank you.
Right. To, to John's point, the allocation method that we've been using has been an across-the-board allocation per head versus our workers' comp claims are higher in certain areas and we should allocate it based on experience. So that's the allocation method that he's, he's referring to as shifting, but it's really about a reallocation of our, based on experience.
Our risk, our legal and risk department is now, um, working with software, so these are costs we can capture more logically as opposed to just spreading them around where it didn't make sense. And then finding out, understanding the full costs of, of the things that we're doing.
Thank you.
Any other questions about expenditures? We can.
Maybe a quick question. The, um, increases to COLA for personnel, that's embedded in that five point four number?
Yes.
Yeah, why don't we take a quick, a quick break?
Okay.
All right.
I think so far, failing systems. So that was a big help to everyone in the county by doing that. So it's been good.
Okay, thank you.
And that's great. And how um, how much work does it take to kind of administer this program? Pretty, I don't know, just.
Last year was harder because it was something new to my department. We had to put all the septic meters into our system, you know, and everything to get them, make sure they got paid. So this year it was kind of the same contractors, so the process was a little easier. As far as verification, it's just going down the forms, making sure they qualify, making sure they have everything they have completed. And then put it in. So it's really not that time consuming, but it, now it's getting easier, so.
The two that were referred to Mountain True, were they, what made those get referred to Mountain True? I'm just curious.
Uh, we ran out of money.
Okay. Fair enough. And they, and they have fun addition, they have fun speaking on what we have.
We don't work with Mountain True, we just refer the clients to them.
So they're doing something similar?
Okay.
Yep.
And do you know um, how much capacity they have? How many do they?
I do not. They came to one of our meetings that we had about this last year.
Yeah, I think they got some money allocated from the state budget for that.
Yeah, and they do all. Surrounding counties, yeah.
Well, that's wonderful because then those additional two people were able to get help.
We hope, yes. So if not, they'll be back on the list for next year, so. Provided we get it refunded, so.
And remind me, what are the income requirements?
Eighty percent.
Okay.
Thank you.
Going to invite Jennifer Harrison up to join us. And she's going to talk about two programs that were in her budget this year that were, that were, I believe brought by the, your committee?
Yeah. Good morning. So, last year, um, you generously supported the agricultural cost share program that's run through soil and water, an amount of forty-two thousand. Just to give you a quick update on what that is, that's anybody that's in agriculture that is looking to make an improvement on their property through what we call best management practices or BMPs. And we fund that through the state at a seventy-five twenty-five percent cost share. However, that's done off of a funding sheet, and that funding sheet is only updated every three to five years. So, um, we are working off some old numbers that made these projects not really coming in at seventy-five twenty-five. They were at times more like fifty-fifty. So this money was helping to get to that seventy-five percent cost share. So currently, of the forty-two thousand that you've provided for this program, we have eight thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars in projects that we have spent. And um, we have the remainder, the thirty-three thousand, in practices that are working currently. We're working to get them on the ground. Here's some of the outcomes. Here's what we'll achieve with that money. And all of these are designed to be protective of water quality. Ultimately, some addressing more erosion, which is also the number one contributor to water quality impairment in North Carolina. So, um, stream crossings are basically how livestock can move through the stream safely and not stay in there and thus pollute the waterway. Stock trails are ways to move animals on a hardened path so that we're not creating erosion channels. Watering tanks, when we fence animals out of the stream, we have to give them access to water. So um, we will be installing four watering tanks. That thirty-six hundred of protected surfaces, that's kind of a hard one to write out and explain, but basically, um, we create surfaces that make manure easy to clean up and make, don't create a giant mud pit so that around feeding areas, watering areas, things like that. We have about almost five thousand feet of fencing put in and putting gutters on a barn, gutters on barns. Very important, keep that roof water from mixing with contaminants on the ground. So um, all total, with all of those projects, they're estimated to be around almost a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. So, um, I think this has been a very successful program. The, our landowners have been extremely appreciative. And we've been working on projects that were funded in FY twenty-two that were on a really old cost sheet. So, um, this, we've had great appreciation for this program.
And is it pretty simple to administer this in addition?
Yeah, this has been extremely easy for us to do. Maybe the hardest part was just figuring out how to equitably engage the program. But once we did that, we, it's been very simple. And it has motivated landowners to actually get these projects on the ground. Without that additional money, it was too expensive for them to engage. So this has been a, um, a win, for sure.
Okay, great, thank you.
But before you leave, I thought you mentioned the cost sheets, and we not, we didn't recommend forty-two in this budget this year because...
Yeah, correct. Um, so we updated the cost sheets this year. So, projects that we, and, and we caught people up. So, projects that are currently funded are, are getting funded at that seventy-five percent. So the way I, um, way to think about this support is that would likely be really helpful in another couple of years before they've updated the sheet again. But just to be responsible of public dollars, we think our program is meeting the needs fairly well right now.
Okay, because the cost sheets are up to date now.
Because they're up to date now. Yeah, we just updated them, so, and we've caught up. Generally, programs have, when you sign a contract, you have three years to get the project finished. So that's why we're working on twenty-two still, they still had time in their program here.
And to be clear, these cost sheets are coming from the state?
From the state, correct. And they're universal across the state, so they're not particular to regions.
Uh, not to get too much in the weeds on this, we can, you know, we talk about this stuff in the environment all the time, but um, just while we're on it. So the state funds seventy-five percent, right? And um, is that a limiting factor in terms of how many projects get done? Like the amount of state funding, or is it that the number of projects, like there's, or is there like, there's plenty of state money? It's just really like how many projects come in Buncombe County where landowners want to participate? That's, that's more the limiting factor. And why these kind of dollars help because we get some more projects in the pipeline?
We get an allocation annually for Buncombe County, usually around sixty thousand dollars.
From the state?
From the state. And then, as we have projects in the waiting list and projects don't get finished, they'll reallocate and we generally get more money. So that's just out of our regular pool annually. Now, you may have heard that um, uh, we were, we were successful in getting two million dollars to address problems in the French Broad in particular. That was four counties. We've added Haywood as well, so now five counties in that two million dollars. So we allocate, we agreed everyone originally to cap ourselves at four hundred thousand per county. And, uh, and we left some money in the pot for engineering. We've since heard that we can't use it for engineering, so then we freed up the money. But now, we have Haywood coming in. So, um, so we think about it in Buncombe County as around four hundred thousand dollars. So we've been able to take that sixty that we usually get, now we have four hundred. So it's significant increase from that, those funds. We have allocated um, over three hundred thousand of those funds into program, projects already, so.
Committed projects.
Really making, yeah, making some serious progress on that.
And it uses the seventy-five twenty-five formula too?
Yes.
Okay.
And that was the two million through our legislative agenda that we worked with, with Senator Mayfield, that we were able to pull in for this region.
Great. And is that one-time funding, or do we expect that state funding to kind of, you know, let's keep it coming, right?
That was one-time funding that may be requested again, but it wasn't given again. It was just one time.
And we've added it back to the legislative agenda again.
Guess what, me again. Um, so the Clean Water Fund. You may recall that this came out of the Energy and Environment Subcommittee as a recommendation, as a way to support actual hands-on projects to improve water quality. So, um, this year, we received three applications totaling a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. The committee has reviewed these and sent staff back to ask a few more questions on the funding mix. We'll be bringing that back to the Energy and Environment Subcommittee in their April meeting, and then it will come to you in the first meeting in May, we believe. And as you may recall that, because those projects are, we'll call them construction projects or hands-on projects, they take a little time to get finished. So we're, we, the deadline for this is the June twenty-twenty-five. So, we don't, um, we won't have any progress to report in terms of projects by the end of this fiscal year. I don't know if you have any questions on that one? More to come.
So we, as we expect to probably carry forward these funds, we have not funded an additional amount in fiscal year twenty-five that's not in the budget right now.
But we're gonna spend, we're gonna spend, I mean, we think we're gonna spend a hundred thousand that we allocated last year.
We will allocate that money. Um, I don't think it will likely be spent by the end of the fiscal year.
It's reimbursement based, so.
Yeah, so I guess as, as I thought about this, you know, I kind of thought, thought of this as sort of like, um, I mean, if we got no applications or something, obviously, we'd be like back to the drawing board for like, why, why is this not, you know, why is there not interest in this or whatever. I guess I kind of envisioned this as like, um, something we would be trying for a few years to see how it goes so that it would be like a recurring investment. I mean, we've gotten some interesting applications for sure, and I think learned a lot from this first year. I think it's gonna be one of these things that probably will take a couple of cycles to kind of get a sense of like, hey, you know, this is, this is really a very cost-effective way to make a difference on this issue, or, or not, right? So, um, but I think if it's something, we want to really kind of see like, if this is a way to make an impact on the Clean Water Goal. Like, we should, we should basically plan on making this recurring investment for at least a few years to, to kind of get enough experience with it to determine if it's like a, you know, something we want to continue or not continue, or, you know, or, or scale, or whatever we decide, so. That's my take on it.
I agree. That, that was my impression when we brought this forward before, was that we were doing a pilot project and would try this for a few years, and then we would learn a lot from that and be able to make that decision, whether we could scale up or keep it at this level or. Yeah, I would.
So add the hundred thousand. Is that?
I would support that. I mean, I know we've got a lot of decisions to make as we go through this, but at least in terms of like first pass, I would definitely want it in the first pass, for sure.
Yes.
I will also likely bring amongst our carryforwards in the, in the fall, this hundred thousand dollars to appropriate additional hundred thousand dollars because we just don't expect to allocate these funds before year end. Does that make sense?
Say it again, please. I couldn't hear you.
So, um, sorry about that.
John, if this is coming to the board in May, based on her timeline, we will allocate it at that time in May.
Reimbursement based on.
It would be allocated, not spent.
Yes.
To your point, that hundred thousand will carry forward. But what I'm hearing the board say is that they will start another application process. So they will need another hundred thousand to do that application process for the twenty-five twenty-six here, so twenty-four twenty-five years.
Thank you, thanks.
Okay. So we have the homeowner grant program. This is the third year for the homeowner grant program, being administered by Economic Services in HHS. Three hundred thousand dollars was budgeted for county funding, of which almost a hundred eighty-six, that, a hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars was awarded. That's about fourteen percent less than in fiscal year twenty-three. Also, when we established this program, there was staff capacity to, to support this initiative. Since that time, HHS has had Medicaid expansion and brought energy assistance in-house, and they spent thirty-three thousand two hundred eighty dollars in contracting out the eligibility determination this year. And the payments are processed by county staff, and the town of Woodfin did not participate this year.
Did not participate in the program?
They did not participate in the program. We did, we did expect when we passed the budget that they would be a part of the program, but they chose not to. So additional funding from the town of Woodfin was not received.
Residents of Woodfin could still apply, of course, but, right, didn't. Like in Asheville, if a resident from Asheville applies, they get an additional funding from the city.
Right, okay.
So the two hundred and fifteen applicants from Asheville presumptively are also embedded in the three ninety-three for the, for the county?
No, the total was six twenty-three, so.
So, but if, excuse me, but if someone, if someone lives in the city and they applied and they're approved, they would get the benefit from the county tax piece?
Yes.
But they would also get it for the city as well, right? Sort of automatically.
As long as the city funds were available, which they did not expend the, all the city funds. The city, city provided, well, the city provided a hundred thousand dollars. So what you see there is, of the two hundred and fifteen Asheville applicants, the county did provide sixty-four thousand and the city spent, provided forty-three thousand to those two hundred and fifteen applicants.
Can the contract administration cover the cities, it covers everyone's cost, right? Because we're running it, so nobody else had any cost.
Correct.
That was not budgeted this year, so HHS did find funds to cover that. We did not expect to have to go out for that.
We did not take it out of program dollars of three hundred thousand. It actually came out of HHS's operation because we wanted to make sure funds was available to truly expand it on your intent, so.
The thirty-three thousand?
Yes. So we didn't reduce to three hundred. We had that still available to give to everyone if there was a need that we, that was still expressed.
They have earmarked forty thousand dollars in this first pass budget for adminis, for contract administration if we choose to continue to do this program.
And so it's three hundred thousand that we have budgeted for this program right now?
Yes, yes ma'am.
We've not spoken to Asheville about their continued participation at this point.
And so if we, we are proceeding with continuing the program, the thirty-three thousand.
Could come from that.
Could come from that because.
You expended a hu, almost two hundred thousand this year, so you had a hundred thousand left over.
Okay.
So you would need to decide if you want it lower to three hundred thousand to about two hundred. Or just have the four hundred in here and have two sixty available, plus the four, forty thousand. We would, we would recommend, of course, that we leave it at three, but use forty thousand of it for the administration versus trying to find out in HHS's operating budget.
That's, that's where I'm leaning. I think that would be appropriate.
I think that makes the most sense.
Got it.
So put the forty thousand dollars, embed that in the total cost.
And this would be two sixty.
Okay. A brief update on the Affordable Parking Program. Eighty percent of available permits at the Sears Alley parking garage are being used, while just under half here at the College Street deck are being used. Administrative costs for this program are minimal. We are utilizing business partners to spread the word about, about the program. So next we up, we have two. So next up, we have two new requests from departments present, and Dame Peterson is here.
Good morning. So, in our ongoing conversations with North Carolina Department of Transportation about concerns with litter in Buncombe County, we've worked with them to get some understanding about scopes of work, their budget, and how they basically apply resources and contracts to NC DOT maintain roads. And, you know, through our conversations, we've really identified that the primary roads, the highways, you know, your I-forties, two-forties, sixty-three, highway seventy-four. DOT does have planned and regular debris and litter removal for those areas, the primary roads. And that's usually on a monthly basis or every other month. But there is no coverage at all or no budget contract for secondary roads in unincorporated areas of the county. So we know that's a gap. It's been a changing scenario where, you know, remember years ago when inmates were used a lot for that, that type of work? There's been difficulty or inaccessibility of using inmates for, for the work like that was previously. So there's, that, that created a gap. And their DOT's focus, the, some of that budget is shared between mowing and litter debris removal. So some of that is shifted around, and obviously, I think we have, you know, identified that gap where there's just not that dedicated presence with funding. We do have local programs, grassroots type things, where partners like Green Works does some pickup. We have the biannual events that NC DOT puts on, which we've got one coming up for the Spring Litter Sweep. But we know that, we've heard those concerns from the board, as well as members of the public about litter in the county. So we, again, we've been having ongoing conversations with our partners, specifically DOT, about ways that we can help supplement that program and work through a couple different iterations of that. This option that we've talked about most recently is, as you can see, the estimated cost is a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. What that is, there's approximately two thousand shoulder miles of, of road in the unincorporated areas of the county for secondary roads. So it's difficult to make a full pass at one time with the contract that DOT has, just due to volume, and that's, that's a lot of area to cover. So we were talking about, okay, if you split that up, maybe a half, so a thousand shoulder miles in the spring for a spring event to kind of coincide with the Spring Litter Sweep and also one in the fall, and kind of split the county up to do, you know, north-south or east-west. We've been working with GIS to see layout what a dividing line could look like that makes sense. So the hundred and eighty thousand, that's a total fiscal year projection for budget, where each event would cost approximately ninety, ninety-five thousand or so for each half, half of a county event. And what that does, it also gives you two passes of visibility with the public seeing that, you know, those teams are out there, they're actively picking up, and also education opportunity for, you know, how, how to get involved. You know, additional, you know, points of contact with the public. So that's what, that's the premises of this program. You know, we've not totally finalized. We thought the Blue Ridge Parkway was a pretty good divider line for the way the secondary roads, you know, split apart. And then if you, if you looked at it that way, you know, if we're doing the north in the spring and then maybe have that dedicated volunteer presence in the south in the spring, and then flip that for the fall, where you've got your funded program in the south and volunteer base really pushing them to focus on the north. So, um, again, that's, uh, that's, that's the program we've talked through. We've thought a lot about this and, and trying to get some ways to help address that. So happy to try to answer any questions about that.
I'll just say, I sincerely appreciate the work going into this. I drive all over the county regularly and see it, and I hear from people regularly for the past few years. And it is, it's a definite issue, and I've seen, and I will have heard, it's, it's pretty depressing out there with the amount of litter that's on our roadsides. And I'm someone who picks our, my road up regularly, so, you know, there's, there's plenty of us out there trying to pick it up, but there's more than what we can do, so. I still want to encourage our other partners to participate and help. Right, but at this point, I feel like we, we need to do what we can to, to help as well. And I certainly think we need to be talking to our state legislators about the funding at the state level in, you know, as well, and making sure that they're, they are funding this type of work and not just pushing it down on the county. That does concern me. And I'd also, I mean, I think there's multiple partners here in the county. I'd love to see the chamber involved. I'd love to see the TDA involved. I'd love to see, really, our, all of our partners really going at this and taking some pride in our community and encouraging folks to, you know, pick up, not throw it out. And, and I will say that we do hear from people with our waste services, and I've seen it myself, blowing out the back of the trucks. So there's, there's a lot of aspects to this, but I'm supportive.
There really is, Commissioner. And just a quick note on that. So remember, the board approved a new ordinance last year for cover your load. And, you know, that's a big piece of it too. You know, we're, a lot of ways, we're addressing a symptom of an issue with litter being blown out. We understand that when people are commuting to our facilities, a lot of times, that's where they're losing things on the way to us. So we had support from the board to implement that ordinance. And I, I feel like when you see the amount of vehicles and you see the cover, like, that, that is having an impact. There's no question. You know, we've issued, since August, two hundred and twenty-seven fines. That's, that's not something we tout that we're having, but that's something that we, you know, we know moves the needle when we're issuing those fines. We did a lot of education, some tarpan doubts, you know, this warning phase, this is coming, and I think that has been effective. But it is, it's a bigger piece of, you know, enforcing it out in the communities is certainly a challenge. And also with the, it's education on the waste and recycling collection site specifically. That's where you get into a little bit of a push-pull because plastic bags covering recycling is something we have promoted strongly against. But it also is a secondary containment to those recycled materials. So it's things like, hey, let's focus on not filling the cart too full. You know, it's those education pieces where we want to see plastic bags out of the recycle stream, but it also creates other challenges if it's overfull and the holler's not being conscious about that.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for speaking to all those different aspects.
Just as an aside to this, what happened to DOT's Adopt a Highway program? I mean, I know I spent an exorbitant amount of weekends as a undergrad at UNC Asheville doing those, and you don't see the signs anymore, and you don't, is it just too much for them to maintain? I am supportive of this, let me say that as well.
Yes, ma'am, Commissioner. It is still a, a very active program. I feel like it's.
Anybody in Buncombe doing it anymore?
Yeah, it's an area that we can do better to help with promotion on that. Because that, that is still an active program. And DOT still, you know, looks for opportunities to partner on the Adopt a Highway section, so it's a, it's a good one. We, we can do, we can do some more messaging. It's a good time right now, so April thirteenth through the twenty-seventh, those two weeks in April are the Spring Litter Sweep. So a lot of that education, we're gonna be touching on as far as the Swaddle Litter Bug Program, Adopt a Highway, those things we're gonna work to help promote.
Yeah, and that's probably a good opportunity for us to message with our partners too, like Green Works, to get on board to support that. Thank you, Dana. Appreciate that.
I think when I was in school, wasn't there like a K D cleanup? They did some kind of education in school, like to teach the kids, you know, so we don't go out and litter and so they could shame their parents or their older siblings if they were littering.
That is where a lot of effective work comes. Yes.
Let's bring out all the stops.
Yeah, every angle.
Before you move, we need to, um, we, this money is not in the budget. It was actually asked from staff to see where you guys landed. So it, it was really trying to get your input to see where you wanted to go with this program, so.
I'm supportive.
I see Al is giving a thumbs up, so. We would put it in, and then as we go through first pass to get to second pass, we'll see what stays, but. Bob, you're back. And the next one is a request also from staff. As we see a need working with a lot of our residents in our community, we have another need that we wanted to lift up to you, to weigh in on. Bob?
So you do have a handout in your packet with a little more detail on this program, but Bob Haynes has returned, and he is going to talk through us through this code enforcement pilot program.
Yes, uh, one clarification, the cost is only seventy-five thousand that we're asking for. Fifty for the condemnation and twenty-five for outreach. So, little bit of error on my math, I apologize for that. So, but anyway, is. So, but anyway, as y'all are very aware of the complaints that we receive from buildings, especially Bartersville. So what we're trying to do is create some kind of quick program to prevent the code enforcement team from condemning someone's house and making them homeless, where we could do a minor repair to that home quickly instead of them going through the other process to the homeowner grant fund long wait. If we could make some quick repairs to their house to keep them from becoming homeless, that's what this, we're trying to do. And the outreach portion of that is substance abuse issues, additional resources they may need, you know, for jobs and stuff like that. So that's what this whole thing, it's a pilot we're trying to come up with. It was spurred from Bartersville Highway, so that's what we're trying to do, is just see if this will even work to help eliminate some of those. I know there's at least three homes right now that are on the verge of condemnation, and if we do condemn it, it's just more people homeless that we're going to have to contend with elsewhere, so.
I'm supportive. I, I feel like there's a need for this, and I appreciate staff working on figuring out some way that we can address, because there's very serious issues to address with this, but this has been one of my concerns along the way, too, is if people are going to end up homeless, especially if there's a child involved.
And the big part for me here, Terry, really is around the outreach part, making sure we can bring services out in our community, especially into far reaches. We can take some of our peer counselors, some of our Sunrise people, and really get, take the service to them instead of trying to make them all come where the service is.
And which is a great idea, because-
Yeah, because a lot of these people don't even have transportation, you know, on their way out-
Right, yeah.
-remote areas, so.
Sorry, I know you're having to kind of guess on this, but with $75,000, I mean, how many home repairs do you think you can reasonably make?
That is a complete guess.
Okay.
So, I mean, it may be as simple as going there and fixing a couple of holes in the floor. It may be as drastic as going there and, a lot of these homes that we see, they rip the copper out of the wiring so they can go buy their, you know, whatever they need to buy. So we might have to rewire some of them. So it's really just a quick guess of trying to get into that. Like, again, this is just a pilot to see if it is even beneficial, just to cut down on the number of complaints that we receive.
And so this will be for properties where the residents are the property owners or related to the property owners?
It has to be-
It's not like a rental situation.
Correct, just like the septic repair, has to be owner occupied. Couldn't use it for rental. It is a repayment, you know, over 10 years, it's pretty much done, and, you know, you're done with the loan. But if you sell it or do something before that, then you'd have to repay that pro-rated portion back.
This, this will be a loan?
Yes.
Well, it'll be a forgivable loan, I think, isn't it?
Forgivable loan, yes.
So if you, if you stay in that home, you said 10 years?
10 years, yes.
But they will need to sign an agreement that if they sell it-
Yeah, we have all that written up and everything.
Okay. But we, you know, we do, of course, other homeowner, uh, home repair work through partners. And, but the idea here is to just give your office some resources, so if you're in a situation, you can just directly deal with it.
Correct, and the length of those waits is a long time, so.
Right, let's give it a try.
Yeah, absolutely. I think this is outside of the, the litter, the biggest complaint that I hear from constituents. And I really, I really do appreciate bringing the services to the folks that are in these parts of our, our county that are often forgotten and may not have the resources to get to downtown to access the services. I think that's a great companion piece to this pilot.
And I just also want to say hats off to our code enforcement team for all the really challenging, very challenging, important work that they're doing.
It is.
Thank you for that. And it, it kind of gives us a carrot to go in the bundle of tools we can use to address situations where I-
Yes, that's what we're hoping, so. Thank you.
Any questions on the expansions you've heard today? The requested expansions, the updates, the new ideas, or anything you need staff to consider going forward?
All right.
So we're going to move to discussion of information technology projects and funding of capital projects. I will have to stand in for our IT director today. This is our list of information technology projects for fiscal year 25. While some preliminary work is being done this year, the bulk of work on the new county website or content management system will be completed in fiscal year 25 at an estimated cost of $350,000. We will also purchase and install an inventory management system for emergency medical services, which uses around $1 million of medical supplies and other inventory a year to stock our trucks. Legal and Risk has requested an enterprise risk management software to facilitate county implementation of the COSO framework to manage compliance risks. The Sustainability Office has requested new software to replace our utility bill software to report out on our energy utilization and identify efficiencies. And lastly, Finance has requested two add-ons for the Cobblestone Contract Management Software that will allow for digital signing of contracts and contractor collaboration. Are there any questions about these projects? I will do my best.
And so the website, we know we definitely need an update to the website. So this, then we'll fix it to where it's not just going to be rely on one person to go in and update every single thing that's needed. They'll have a much improved system-
And more frequent.
And more frequent.
The content management software will allow subject matter experts in departments to update their own items as opposed to having a bottleneck for webmasters.
And making it more streamlined as well. You don't have to dig 50 different slides to see the information more clearly.
It's kind of like building our own internal Squarespace kind of system.
Want to say anything to this?
This is definitely needed.
Squarespace is a great example. WordPress is a content management system. And so each department would be able to update their content regularly, frequently. There will be checks and balances so that there's an approval system, so that content has to be reviewed before it gets posted. However, our current timeline, we're at four to six weeks on major projects on the website.
And this would reduce it to?
Days. Days, hours.
Again, the department themselves would be able to update as necessary rather than wait on, put in a ticket with Lilian's folks.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions on IT projects?
And Commissioners, you, you know, we've talked about COSO for years now, and we have, we built the foundation. We do have Kelly Howson as a risk manager. And so we're now ready to start getting ready for COSO and across the county and looking at those internal controls. So this software would help Kelly, even if you want to send anything to it. But this software will really to help us to streamline. We spend a lot of time right now with paper and ledgers on our insurance policies, so if we can get that risk done then we can start working on the COSO across the county as a whole, so.
The, the simple truth is, is that for years, the process was just manually entering into Excel spreadsheets. And now, the, the frame, the original- the first module of Origami is getting in place now, and it's up and running, so you can just type it all in and just run it, and you can run reports. And you don't have to pull that stuff manually to figure it out. Now, with the next module of Origami, if someone in John's department slips and falls, he can enter the stuff himself and just goes into the system. It's tracked, and then you can say, yes, most accidents do happen in your department. Here's how we know that. It's just simple stuff like that. And then Kelly will start to be able to go into departments and audit where the risk actually lies and try to mitigate that before it happens. Because we're chasing lots, lots of workers' comp problems, which is getting more and more expensive, and we just need to make people realize where the risk is. And this will help.
So we're going to talk about fiscal year 25 capital improvement plan. And the capital review team assessed over 30 potential projects for fiscal year 2025 and made recommendations to the county manager. This list is those projects for which we would PEGO and make an interfund transfer to support. So there are about $250,000 worth of renovation and repair associated with our comprehensive facility assessment this year. This includes water-to-line weatherization at Owen Park and an HVAC upgrade and ladder access at the interchange building. Security enhancements will be completed for the main lobby of the 40 Cox Building Avenue Building to ensure client and staff safety. Cost of the renovation and equipment will be about $436,000 with $80,000 of ongoing software and staffing annually. A new bathroom facility will be installed at Fisherman's Trail at Lake Julian Park for $694,000. Phase two of the ANCO Recreation Destination. This is a match to the $4 million grant from the TDA for this project. Our required match is 50%, but we have leveraged some costs already to this match, leaving $3.7 million remaining. We will establish this budget and make contributions over four years, beginning with one quarter, $935,000 in fiscal year 25. And dryer installation at the detention center will run about $591,000. This requires engineering for the venting of these dryers and replaces units that are about 15 years old. Any questions on the PEGO items? This totals a $2.9 million transfer in PEGO transfer from the general fund to the capital and grants funds and is amongst the, the other financing sources you saw earlier in the expansion budget. Okay?
No projects give you heartburn?
I'm sorry?
I was asking if there's no, any projects on the list that you had questions or concerns about.
These are recommendations for 10 debt-funded projects as follows. Design of a local EMS base in West Asheville. Land procurement and design of a regional EMS base in South Asheville. These are both per the EMS assessment that was brought to you last year. Year-one costs of a shelter resiliency project. This project will install generators at four different Buncombe County schools to power essential portions of the schools and stand up emergency shelters around the county. The first-year budget of $2.3 million includes one generator and the upfront costs of design and engineering for the entire project. The total cost of this project over four years with one installation each year will be $4.8 million.
Are those portable generators, or is it, are these kind of a permanent fixture of the-
These would be permanently fixed.
Diesel situations?
I don't-
Is that the intent?
I don't know that we know the answer to that.
Yeah.
We'll find out for you.
So can you just talk about that project a little bit more? Kind of the, the thought behind it and-
So, so currently, we, we utilize mostly a church for, for any sheltering opportunities here. And as we start building out our emergency operations fund, as several of you heard, that we need to have, this would give us a shelter in every quadrant of the county, a north, south, east, or west high school is the plan. And, um, this, the gymnasium, I already have shower facilities, so we don't have to worry about showers if it's a longer-term stay. The cafeteria is an open space that you can put cots for sheltering. So this just helps you that space where you can have electricity should something happen in our community. We believe that the most need for shelter, and it's probably in the wintertime, that we would have here, because we need more winter storms than not, and that would help us to answer the question. You have electricity opportunities, you have shower facilities, you have places that you can prepare meals for staff. And the, the facility is already there, so we just need to outfit it that it could serve in that capacity.
For the, for the generator backup?
Right.
System at four facilities.
Right, and that would be the four main sheltered opportunities in our county.
And so the generators cost a little over $500,000 each?
So this is just year one, is be the design and the wiring that has to happen in all the schools, so having all that design ready. And then going from there, we would have it in place that we can go to each school, and hopefully you can take that design to, from school to school. So we're trying to do the upfront cost in that 2.3 this year.
So what's the upfront cost of it? I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm still unclear, like, the total scope of the-
So $2.3 million is the first-year cost, which will purchase one of the four generators and do the engineering and design and, and wiring and set up, set up all three sites, prepare all, all four sites.
Right.
But one, one site will be completed with additional sites coming online year over year.
The 2.3 is just for one of the sites?
And all the upfront work. The total cost of the project is $4.8 million. So almost half of the, half of the total cost is in this first year.
Right, and the, the design and that electrical outfit, because I guess you, you have to have a way for it to transfer, automatic transfer switches and stuff like that would be, we're trying to do all that upfront this year.
It seems like it might be worth, who's spearheading this project, is it?
It would be Robert, I believe.
Um, it's-
General Services.
Robert, Robert Brown and Angie Ledford in emergency management.
I think this is one always, when you think about disaster preparedness, emergency operations, I think this is one of the most challenging pieces of it to wrap your head around, because we think about immediate response when it's happening, and we think about recovery and resilience after that. And we don't do enough planning on the front end to be prepared. And you do think about investing this much money in something that you don't know when you're going to need, but when you need it, you need it, and at that point, it's too late to, to start the project. So I'm actually really appreciative of Angie and Taylor and the folks in General Services for being proactive enough to be thinking about this as part of our long-term emergency planning.
And they have collaborated with the schools on this, so the schools are on board.
I mean, it's a, it feels like a true community partnership to me, which is what makes a, a response successful.
I, I 100% agree with the, like, the purpose of the project and, and getting it done. So I'm totally, like, totally don't need any convincing on it, so I'm to, I'm very supportive of it, having these four facilities. Yeah, we, we don't know when we might need them. It might be weather-related. It might be something you can't predict, right? So I'm just, I'm just wanting to understand, like, these are the different costs that go into, to-
And we can bring across-
To implementing it, yeah, yeah. So some more details.
There's also, there's a 30% ITC from the Pollution Reduction Act to do microgrids for this kind of thing. So that might be an interesting angle to look at.
Add Jeremiah to the conversation. He's already part of the conversation, but we'll have him look at it from that lens.
A $2.3 million microgrid since, uh, I don't know. Thyrus gives you 30% back, anyway. That's where my mind is going.
Cool, great, great idea. All right, what else?
Okay. Renovation and repair of 205 College Street, across the street, totals $1.2 million. Two and a half million dollars is slated for several roofing projects as well as renovation on parking decks across the county. Design of a new parks and recreation facility at the sports park, as they are, will be leaving the Allport Building, is budgeted at $217,000. The system replacement for the Public Safety Interoperability Partnership will be a three-year project totaling $10 million. Say that three times fast. Our current system is end-of-life, and this is the system that connects all communications between public safety entities across the county.
And you said this will be a three-year project?
Yes, they expect to finish in three years. They are currently out-
For RFP right now?
For RFP, and, and they were funded this year for a contract for that to do the preliminary work necessary. So this is our, our current computer-aided dispatch that works with 911. It's from 2002.
This is the jail management system, the record management system, as long as computer-aided dispatch. It is your public safety. It is your public safety platform. For fire departments or all of law enforcement from Black Mountain to Leaverville, this is that system.
And and what's the total scope of this project over the several years?
Ten million.
Ten million dollars, yes. And these would all be, these would all be debt funded projects.
Okay, and so that's six hundred and fifty ongoing is just the?
Your subscription annual maintenance on that system.
Okay.
We would, we would be looking at cost sharing with other entities as time goes on.
City of Asheville Police is also on that near fire department, so all units in a go- in the county would pay, help pay for that six weekend overtime.
A detention center facility assessment renovation repair will work on flooring and roofing as well as elevator repairs and upgrades of the fire alarm system, and this is budgeted at one point nine million dollars. Electric vehicle charging infrastructure will be installed at the College Street parking deck. This project will establish the power needed to install additional charging stations at cost of four hundred twenty six thousand dollars. The last project on this list is year three of solar on public buildings and schools. And this also adds budget for battery storage systems to hold in excess solar energy at county facilities. This is four point one million dollars in the budget with an estimate of annual save, potential savings of two hundred thousand dollars.
Sorry, Johnny, so that does include some battery systems?
It does.
Okay, great.
So we had four million flat initially, and we were, one of the projects we were brought was battery storage systems for to begin piloting battery storage systems, so rather than
Cox, I think, or do you recall?
I'm, I'm not sure which facilities right now.
I think forty Cox was a different funding that was almost the two fifty grant, I believe that we got, that's current year. This is expanding that.
Ah, okay.
So we did, we decided to build this into the solar project.
Okay.
I don't think there's a specific site yet.
For this one?
There's a couple on the list.
Yeah, I think this includes two sites initially.
And one question about the the first one, actually, the West Asheville EMS base. Now, is that to do a design over at the what was the primary school? So is the intent for the West Asheville EMS base to stay at that location?
That is the intent.
That is the intent. Okay, so you're not looking, you're not wanting to go somewhere else? That is where you want that?
Yes, we're not, we're not looking for land in the West Asheville area, we're working with the schools on that feasibility, see what can go on that site, but the intent would be that we have our temporary location there until we can tear down, build, all that. So the intent would be to keep that space for emergencies.
And so when they did that report, what, brought it to us, I guess, over a year ago, so that that location does tie in?
Yes, it was actually, it within that grid, it would, it would be close enough that we, that would work.
The intent's to level the buildings there currently?
We're working with their school system on that feasibility right now, but yes, there's enough old building materials in that site that we don't think we wanted
Yeah.
reuse that site.
And this next question is probably maybe best for after the design is done, but would there be room for other uses of that property you would?
Yes, yes, we're working with the schools, because the schools have needs as well.
Yeah.
And so we're working in partnership on that feasibility. We don't have that complete yet, but we're working with the schools. We initially went in thinking maybe a pre K facility along with an EMS. Even a library was brought up at one point. The schools wanted some place for their maintenance. Is it maintenance or a food service? Food service? Yeah, trans- yeah. So we we've looked at more than that site now to see if we can meet all the needs. The schools have a different idea where P K could possibly go, so we're looking through.
We're working together? Primary.
What other location is in mind?
We're pre K could go.
Yes, we're pre K could go, yes. So they're looking at a different location for that as well. So we we've been in good conversation with Asheville City Schools on what that site can look like. But at the base, it always will be an EMS base for us. We haven't changed that need.
And so just so I can get a complete picture, so we've got the east, East Buncombe EMS base over where the pool area is.
Owen Pool.
Owen Pool. And then you're looking for land for South.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and then we have one at McCormick, in the McCormick area, is it?
The downtown, the downtown site. The the original plan when we leave forty McCormick will be to, can we repurpose that site for a downtown site?
Okay.
Yes.
So you, okay, to have an EMS.
To have an EMS base there, so that feasibility is ongoing as well, because that building is old and it hasn't, the the weight of the ambulances going in there would have to make sure we have, we can, it's about the weight of the ambulance, is all I know right now, that we have to make sure that that ground and everything there can support the weight of those ambulances coming in and out of that site, so that is ongoing now with the soils, the land. All that, just looking at that site now to see if it can be utilized as an EMS base.
Okay, and then in the north, you've now started looking for land?
Not yet.
Yet, okay, and so I guess my only question just around this West Asheville one, the proximity of the West Asheville at this location to the McCormick. Right, the closeness of that and just thinking of then, I I just would like you to speak to then accessibility to that whole western part of the county. If you've got two that are right there fairly centralized.
I would reach out to Jamie and Taylor and get you a better answer of of where that needs to be. When we looked at West Asheville, that site was within the grid that we came out from our study, but I'll make sure that we can get you a better answer when we look at that western side, that we have good coverage.
And the McCormick, the McCormick location would be fixed on downtown and this, and southerly of downtown.
Right.
So that's, so that the, that's where the McCormick area would get, would go, whereas the West Asheville would service West Asheville and the outer west portions there with large, with access to the interstate.
We'll get the S first to get a better answer.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just generally, I remember talking to Taylor one time, and he said they're fairly near each other, but it's the heat map. So they're, they're different responses.
It's a lot different, yeah.
And the volume of people downtown. I'll get a better.
Thank you.
Are are the city schools contemplating potentially, if the existing building goes down, actually constructing some kind of new maintenance facility or storage facility there?
That's part of the feasibility study that's in progress right now.
If there's any, if there's any old building that can be maintained, there is um, I forget what it was that that was, yeah, the outside of the building already. I don't know what it is, but it looks like, what, I don't know if it's a gym?
There is an old gym there.
They could probably use this from some storage, so we don't know yet what's going to have to stay or what can come down.
But there is significant remediation that has to be done on the existing building to make it use useful and potentially as costly as raising it and building something else.
So the cost benefit of remediation versus new, all that's being weighed right now.
Yeah, I I can, I don't want to get all the weeds on this in this meeting, but like, I mean, that is like a, if you're, if we're going to go to all the expensive, taking all this stuff down, so you have like a clean slate. I mean, I understand any place like a city schools need some storage or whatever, but like, it seems like a, would be an incredible underutilization of that property, so. I mean, if it was just them doing it, I mean, it's kind of their call, but if like we're involved in it somehow, I would just want to raise that as a concern of like, we're going to build this on Haywood, Haywood Road, we're going to build storage here, really?
Yeah.
That seems just like, it should be like a, something with much higher, that recognize the highest best use of that land, so.
And you know, when I was on the school board, this was ten, fifteen years ago. You talk about a city school system with only what, ten buildings? Twelve where the county's got forty four? Why can't we consolidate both of them? Wouldn't that make sense?
Be the maintenance facility next door.
Right. Because when you look at what the county has got out there, their facility is unreal. It's like going into Home Depot if you've ever been out there. I mean, they've done a good job with it.
Storage facility.
Yeah.
Where the central office is.
Yeah, it's out by, it's out by the Nesbit Academy right back in there.
It's inventoried and everything is crazy.
To me, that would make more sense than spending several million dollars.
We can chat. All right.
Again, there's a feasibility study being done and nothing is budgeted for construction on that site. We're budgeting some design for the facility, so I think it is potentially still wide open about what can happen there.
Yes.
Are there any other questions about the debt funded projects? As these projects reach various stages of completion, they will be included in future debt issuances and add to future year debt payments.
All right, thanks.
Two other projects on the horizon that are being funded in different methods include the Ferry Road Transportation Project. This is funded through ARPA at four point nine million dollars and will begin to establish road infrastructure for this project. And the fifty fifty two Cox Avenue Affordable Housing Loan. This is one of the DFI identified county owned sites for affordable housing. The seven point eight million dollars associated with this project could be supplied with general obligation bonds. All go bond projects will eventually be paid through debt service. Finance forces me to say that. Are there any questions about recommended capital projects?
So the fifty to fifty two Cox Avenue project might actually start incurring some expenses in this coming budget year?
Not in this coming year, but in future years.
Future year, got it. I'd be like, oh my gosh, that's so fast.
Yeah.
How's that possible? All right, understood.
So if there are no more questions about recommend projects, I'm going to ask Matt Evans to discuss capital funding strategies with you.
Thank you all, that's the opportunity to continue the discussion that we started in November. Melissa presented this slide as part of the, that November budget workshop. And as we're thinking about capital funding strategies, particularly long term planning, we want to balance three key pillars of what we call fiscal sustainability. Liquidity, capacity and affordability. So when I say liquidity, I'm referring to the availability of cash to meet our funding needs. And when I say affordability, I'm referring to the degree to which us as an organization can commit to funding our capital program without increasing the burden on our community. And when I say capacity, I refer to the level of debt us as an organization can add without violating statutory or policy debt limits or trigger a reduction in credit rating. So before we talk about where we're going, let's talk about where we have been. The county utilizes two main capital funding strategies. That is debt and cash, or you hear it referred to as paygo. Remember, these aren't funding sources, right? These are funding mechanisms. So when we utilize debt, we're able to spread costs over multiple years. For example, a hundred million dollar project, maybe a lot to consider in one year. But as we spread that out over twenty years, it's a bit more manageable. But also when we utilize debt, we we end up paying more for projects, right? The interest and other costs of issuance, and to illustrate that, this means over twenty years, a hundred million dollar project may end up being a hundred and thirty million or a hundred and forty million. Lastly, issuing debt, we must be in tune to our existing debt load, speaking of that capacity issue, as not to uh trigger anything from that standpoint, so. Cash is the other funding strategy that we've used. It's using our current resources that we have to pay for projects, right? Saves us interest, but we also feel the annual hit more. We need to have cash on hand to pursue this route. So where we have been is a story of inconsistency, if you will. So on the left side of this slide, you can see the approximate amount of capital transfers we've made over the last three fiscal years. You all will recall that we have an adopted fund balance policy that allows us to transfer over a certain amount of fund balance to cover. And what you're seeing here is that in conjunction with some ARPA dollars and uh other code funding that we would have had. But you can see that there's a decline there. So now we talk about where we're headed. We're at a critical point of converging master plans and countywide assessments, which means we must be proactive in our approach uh for capital funding. So our current draft of the CIP shows amounts for essential technology needs. We just chatted about aging infrastructure, expanding facilities. We have a five year need approaching about a total of five hundred million dollars, we're approaching. We tend to consider a lot of our discussion unoperated, but we also need to focus our efforts on capital planning. So as mentioned earlier, Melissa spoke with you all in November, and we've been working very diligently and exploring options on how we can optimize or change our current processes to have a more proactive approach as far as capital strategy, capital funding strategies are concerned. We're working towards this idea of long term financial planning, and we're presenting these options to you as considerations, and this is take them as individual or let's put them all together, um we'll walk through these. So starting from the top, we want to make sure that we are building a capital program that's well informed from our master plans and facilities studies. You've, you've seen the emergency services master plan, we've talked about the Greenways master plan. We want to leverage those master plans, facilities assessments, so we can better estimate our annual spikes through our CIP years. We would like to extend our current five year CIP to seven years. It allows us just for better planning from the financial standpoint. We currently pay our county debt out of the general fund, so we're hoping to establish a debt service fund. And by doing so, we can isolate debt service and fund balance for greater transparency. Importantly, we hope to set a funding target of seventy percent debt, thirty percent paygo, which is informed by best practice. And we think by establishing this target, we're better positioning ourselves to balance the pillars of fish, uh financial stability that I mentioned earlier, liquidity, affordability and capacity. And if we think about the idea that issuing debt means adding in additional costs, creating a target for reserve, right? Will help us not hit some of that burden. And we're hoping to accumulate, as I'm going to go over on the next slide, we're hoping to accumulate this transfer, these reserves for a minimum of three years and letting it build up.
Over over like some period of previous years, what would be the ratio we would have had?
Of paygo versus debt? So it's been a bit skewed because of the fund balance policy and the transferred, the large transfer we made in FY twenty two.
Kind of averaged it out.
It's primarily been for the county side more paygo. But as we're moving forward, right, if we think about going in the future, the story's changing a bit because our capital needs are more greater, right?
If you look, recall the last two slides, we're looking at a little above twelve percent paygo versus the remainder debt from what I showed you in the prior slides.
Thanks, John. So this slide summarizes language that we need to include in a policy. We need to have an annual transfer from the general fund. Remember, we're hoping to create a new debt service fund to pay for county capital, but this formula we've modeled and hope to include in a policy is a one year transfer of a hundred and twenty percent of debt service at the general fund. And then future years would grow at a compounded rate, so we would take that hundred and twenty percent and grow it by an annual percentage with a minimum of two percent up to a max of CPI. So we need, I think the most important thing to know here is we need to grow this contribution. And we've included some numbers on the bottom of this slide where you can see, since we're creating that debt service fund, right? This transfer at the bottom of twenty three point four, most of that is the already obligated debt service that we need to have, right? So we, we're basically just shifting that from paying debt service in the general fund to a debt service fund. So what we're really focusing in here is this capital reserve portion of that transfer, three point nine in the first year, four point seven in the next, it grows with those debt service needs, right? Remember, a hundred and twenty percent of debt plus a compounded growth, so we're hoping to get to that seventy thirty target. This is a start. We think the most important part here is committing ourselves to a policy to get this going and then constant evaluation of it.
So just to confirm, so you're saying this first year, a hundred and twenty percent is what you're shooting for in year one, and then after that, it'll just be the year over year growth with the, let's see?
Two percent up to CPI.
Okay.
Minimum of two percent up to um CPI. Melissa, are you online? Do you want to add anything?
No, I think Matt's done an excellent job of portraying the needs and and the importance of the financial sustainability and planning for our future. And I think this is a great start. I think getting to that uh funding target of a seventy thirty split and really helps to ensure that we're growing at an affordable rate for our community.
Okay, and so then the basically the nineteen point five is already the debt service, so what you would be, what we have to do anyway, so the three point nine is what you're asking to be put in the budget for this year to start the capital reserve, and then we'd be adding to that each year. Okay. And that was not included in any other projections earlier when we did any, okay?
And we wanted to bring, can you go back the slide? We wanted to bring these, these pieces, I guess, the components of a policy to see where you would land. Seventy thirty, we believe is best practice for us. But if you want to go to eighty twenty or something else, that would change the one, that would change how much money you'll put in to this, if you seventy five, twenty five. Any, any parts of that ratio you change would change what you would put aside.
Does, let's just say we do seventy thirty, does that include like all capital or only major capital?
That will be your major capital and Melissa, anytime you want to jump in, but going back on the other slide, that would be your IT, your major IT. That we capitalize technology and your major maintenance and renovation and new infrastructure. So those are the pieces that we will look to fund with that money.
It's your CIP projects, so the continuation of the projects that John walked through on the couple of slides, it's gonna be projects in that nature.
It's not vehicles or small park projects or stuff like that?
No, and we do during the capital process divert some project requests brought to us back to departments to put in their operating if they don't meet what we term a def- the definition of a capital project. So it would be the things on the two lists you saw earlier, the PEGO and the debt projects.
And if you recall, we were talking about leasing those vehicles, so that hit would not be something that you will see that large three, four million dollars, or plan would be that that would be a lease conversation every year. There's some vehicles that we cannot put on the lease, like our our patrol vehicles or law enforcement or ambulances could not go on this. Thank you, the specialized equipment, but we could do those as our smaller debt service. So we're looking at various different strategies, strategies to make sure that we can fund these major capital, fund the major infrastructure in our community that we need. And then still have opportunities to do operations and support the other obligations that we have.
And I think the last important piece is, we talked about investments earlier, as we can start moving money for these items, they can sit there and earn interest while they're.
Right, yeah.
And then can you speak some more specifically to the rationale for the seventy thirty, why why that's the best practice?
Lisa, Melissa, you were again ready to say, can you also address Terry's question as you're speaking?
Sure, so as you look at the amount of additional costs that you have when you issue debt. So as Matt mentioned, if you were issuing a hundred million dollars in debt, or you have a hundred million dollars of a capital program to fund. If you issue debt to fund it, now you have to generate about a hundred and forty million of funding to pay that over a twenty year period. Whereas if you split it seventy thirty, you've reduced that considerably, right? So I I view the seventy thirty split is not necessarily changing how much we would transfer. We could still reduce how much we transfer if that's too big of a jump for the first year. It would just take us longer to get to that thirty percent cash that we need for PEGO. I still think this is kind of the optimal because as you look at kind of what percent of your tax rate is being spent on debt service. Anything, you start kind of really looking at anything over fifty percent. And you see, you know, some organizations that kind of have planned from the very early stages prior to having to do huge infrastructure replacements and investments and adopting that, it's really hard to do. I mean, you you could get there over, you know, a very long period of time, seventy thirty is just much more achievable. It's also when you look at the mix of types of projects, looking at a seventy thirty split from a funny, excuse me, from a cash finance perspective. But also looking at the types of assets that you're looking at and types of projects. You you'll be in some years to where you'll have a heavier percent that are your long term useful life, high dollar amount. But then you have other years that are very heavy in smaller, smaller dollar amounts and then shorter useful life. And those would be more appropriate for the 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 PEGOs we've been doing. But we see a tremendous growth in our in our long range plan as a result of the investment that we've made in these master plans and facility assessments. And I think that the sooner that we start, the the better prepared we have to ensure that we're continuously improving those aging that aging infrastructure and and maintaining our assets. And providing for the growth that we see with EMS bases and new facilities.
Thank you.
We will bring a draft of the long term plan next at our next work session, so you can sort of see what the map looks like for other projects over the next several years.
Kind of piggybacking off what you showed us in December with the all those capital improvements.
Correct.
Going towards the end of the decade.
Yes, I think what we showed was five years and we have, we have been working in our mind on a seven year. Facility study was a fifteen year plan, and so we're now year three or so in the facility study. And so we know what those needs are for the next fifteen years, and we also did a jail management plan and our detention center. So we know what the needs are on that, those two major assets that we have, so we can lay that out in a seven year plan and bring that forward. We know there's significant need.
I mean, my, you know, my concern about the formula is that, I mean, does we just, we look at the list of projects. If it's seventy thirty versus, you know, eighty twenty. Just it's gonna, how much will it limit our ability to implement the capital projects without raising the taxes to do it, right? Because it's just if to the extent that we do more with cash, it's just gonna mean that you have to have more revenue right then to pay for stuff. So I I just wonder, is it gonna put us in a situation to rely more on tax increases to implement the capital improvement plan? Or just limit how many projects we can do under the capital improvement plan relative to a different mix? So I mean, I get the rationale, but that's, I mean, I guess that's the obvious trade off, right?
And we can look at different scenarios, this, go ahead, Melissa, this was optimal in our, in when we looked at the data. But we can look at different scenarios and bring that to you guys for options in in April. Melissa, I interrupted you, go ahead.
Sure, so the setting this target would be more of how many years would it take us to achieve this funding level? Realistically, it will take a while, it will take many years. And we can achieve it as slow as what's realistic and what is affordable. But I think optimally, this is the target, but it's not that as soon as we adopt this that we're putting indexes and metrics in here to say year one, year two, we have to hit this target, we do not.
Flexibility in terms of getting to it, alright, that's that, that sounds good.
Yes.
In the long run, it should work to our advantage when we look at raising taxes and really what we're starting today. If we do it right, I think with real with staff and all. The next twenty years, twenty years from now. The county commissioners and the constituents will be thanking us for what we're starting today. I mean, this is something I think we've done in the past too much of operating from day to day. And we need to look ahead and plan for it, and this is what this is doing. You know, and this is what the taxpayers want to see too, so I think it's positive all the way around.
Thank you, that's that, I'm I'm so happy to hear you say that.
I mean, our thoughts on for our finance office?
Thank you all very much for all the great information.
So I have a couple of questions as we wrap up today. What stood out the most for you today?
That most recent discussion made me feel better about all the capital improvement projects you showed us back in December, so I feel a little bit. Lost some sleep for about a week there.
What stood out for me is
No, I know, I know.
We just discussed wrapping up, because you know, as we talk about all this, you know, I've been wondering how in the hell are we gonna get our arms around it to get there? But this gives us a roadmap to start, and I think that's that's what we all want to see, that's what I want to see as a taxpayer, not as a commissioner.
Is there anything today that gives you pause?
I heard, I heard nothing about any paddle boats at Lake Julian, that was concerning to me. I just assume we have everything we need, so I guess I'll just relax, I can talk about it offline, so. That good it didn't come up, I assume.
Parks and Recreation does have a master plan in progress and I'm certain that they will have some requests once that plan is completed.
I mean, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't talk about the, unless I'm sorry if I was daydreaming for a minute, we didn't, the Laperre Shelter project was not referenced in the presentation today. We do have some funding strategies around kind of launching it, but that is a an idea, but it is, you know, work in progress that as we've looked at previous proposed facilities. I mean, we are aware that that could be a significant, you know, financial commitment, so I'll just note that that was not in the mix of the project ideas today. That's in December from next year, though, runs through December of next year.
We we have to have.
Is it December of this year?
We have to have all money obligated by December and spent the following year.
The problem.
That's a different question.
The beds that we currently have was eight seventy-five between us and the city, that money does expire December twenty-four.
Yes.
Okay. So January twenty-five, six months into this fiscal year and then going forward.
Right, okay.
So that is funding that we need to still talk through with our partners from the city and what that will look like.
It doesn't give me pause, but I am really pleased to see that we are looking long term and investing in county core services. I think all too often we hear that government does a lot of studies and then they sit on a shelf. And specifically looking at our EMS study, I mean, we're really investing in in what came back to us that we needed to do to provide, I think, more efficient, effective EMS service to our residents across Bonham County. That specifically doesn't give me pause, but definitely pleased to see that we're investing in the things that we're supposed to be investing in as a county government.
Yeah, I agree, things like the regional EMS and even emergency shelter situations are, it's like one of the primary reasons we exist.
Exactly.
We should have those things.
I agree, Parker. I'm sorry, I took that as the generator project.
That's what, that's what I meant, that's what I meant was, yeah.
And we are working on our emergency operation plan, yes.
We will bring that to you guys as well, we we heard about that at our last training, that we we need, we need an emergency operations plan that is updated and reflective and something that we can pivot to quickly. So we just completed our continuation of operations plan, our COOP plan, that's completed. And now we're moving into that operation, emergency operations plan, so.
I'm excited about that.
Lots of foundational pieces are being laid and we're excited about that as well.
Do you need staff to know anything else before we wrap up to that?
I can't think of anything else at this time, so thanks for, thanks for all the information today, great presentations, good discussion. Thanks for getting us to here and look forward to taking next steps in the budget process.
Be back together in another month.